You're all set, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the town council meeting. Here we are, March 4th, 2021. Time on my clock here is 7:04. Make a quick announcement in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known at this. Not hearing any. Madam Clerk, could we please get a roll call, please?
Counselors. Assless.
Present.
Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagewan.
Here.
Rapaceddy.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levesque.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Neff.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
We have four of them, all thirteen.
Excellent. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sarah, if you could. Any mute there? Mike? Counsel Cullum is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Cullum. At this time, I'd like to, if we could all just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, so at this time, something, you know, a little bit new, so to speak, or something we haven't done in quite some time, I just wanted to recognize a couple of gentlemen that have been recognized. So I don't necessarily want to award somebody that's been awarded, but I did want to recognize because these two gentlemen are from our town. And those two gentlemen received the 2021 Black Excellence on the Hill Award, which is Representative Steve Exaros nominated, responsible police officer Brian Morrison, and Representative Kippe Diggs recommended John Reed for the award. And they both were awarded that on February 26th, 2021, in a virtual Capitol Hill event. And so I just, you know, it's, this tells a story, not only about what's happening at the State House, but tells really a story about what's happening here in Barnstable. And, you know, knowing of Mr. Reed and knowing, you know, and being able to call Brian Morrison a friend, a friend to many here in the community, I just wanted to make sure and give them a shout out because I thought that was worthy of doing so. So without further ado, do we have them in the waiting room by any chance, Sarah?
I see them on the screen, man.
Oh, you know what it is? I need a bigger, very good. Thank you very much for saying I need a bigger monitor. So they are with us. Without further ado, I'd ask Counselor Deborah Dagewan to introduce and congratulate Mr. John Reed. Take it away, Deborah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like, I would also like to congratulate Mr. John Reed for being awarded Excellence on the Hill Award. John L. Reed has been a mentor, community leader, and trailblazer on Cape Cod for the past several decades. He was born in Boston, went to Dorchester High School, and graduated from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. After continuing his education at Salem State University and Bridgewater State University, he was recruited to teach at Barnstable High School in 1973. You know his age, right? He taught social studies at DHS for thirty-seven years and was an inspiration to countless students. As a recognition of his outstanding teaching care career, he received the final National Education Association honorary Council Trendon Memorial Award at the Association's 42nd Annual Human Civil Rights Award Dinner in 2008 in Washington, DC. A member of the NEA Board of Directors, Mr. Reed served as the Chair of the NEA Black Caucus for two years. He also held office in the Massachusetts Teachers Association as well as the Barnstable Teachers Association. In 1973, he started a school organization at Barnstable High School, Imani Club, which offered students civic instructions, field trips, and facilitated community projects that encouraged leadership and cooperation. Mr. John Reed has always been an active and a real leader. He is the past president of the Cape Cod Chapter of NAACP and has worked tirelessly in local and state law enforcement officials on civil rights and racial justice issues. He was also the chairman of the Barnstable Civil Rights Committee for six years, a member to hundreds of Cape citizens. He says his mentor in the early days was Joseph Deluca, a well-known Cape civil rights leader in his own right. Mr. Reed has also been a member of the State Democratic Committee. Mr. Reed is currently the Executive Director of the Zion Union Heritage Museum in Hyannis, which highlights the rich and varied arts and culture history of the African-American and Cape Curdyan community on Cape Cod. I personally want to thank John. John was one of the people who recruited me to run office. I was kicking and screaming, but he said, you need to do it. I think people will vote for you. I didn't believe in myself at that time. He did. And I just want to thank him for that. And he's very deserving of this award. So I'm happy that they nominated.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dagewan. And at this moment, Mr. Reed, would you like to offer some words? You're on mute, sir. You're muted. Mr. Reed, you're muted. There you go.
I want to thank everybody for supporting me for all these years and believing and having confidence that we can raise the community and generations of young people to get to the places where we can go. In 1973, I came here as a solo act, but I have to admit something. Since then, we have tried to build a community. Everybody's joining us table to make this place better. And I am forever a Barnstable person, although I live in West Yarmouth. I'm a Barnstable person who moved over around the hospital area. So I want to thank the town council. I want to thank the state. I'll just say here, most I want to thank Kippe Diggs for nominating me. Thank you.
Well deserved. Thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Bravo. Well, if you could stick around, Mr. Reed, I'm sure Mr. Morrison would attest to the fact that that trailblazing, that path that you blazed was a path that Officer Morrison walked on. And
I'm not going anywhere.
Good. I'm glad to hear it. And so I did want to congratulate our principal police officer, Brian Morrison, and also my dear friends. Brian joined the Barnstable Police Department in 1997 and has been a terrific representative of the department in the town of Barnstable. He has been assigned as the department's Youth and Community Officer since 2017. Quite honestly, I can't think of a better person to hold that position. It's stationed at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. He is also our department's Civil Rights Officer, a member of our Mountain Bike Unit, Honor Guard, a doctor's school officer for Hyannis West Elementary School. And most recently, Brian has become an instructor in the Fair and Impartial policing. In addition to Brian's work, he's incredibly involved in our community, and that is an understatement. He's a founding member of People of Action, Barnstable Community Organization dedicated to creating a better Barnstable through uplifting action. And Lieutenant Governor for the Kiwanis International Club, a member of the Elks Lodge, the Masonic Lodge, the Shriners, and the Moose Lodge, and works with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And he's a past Big Brother, Big Sister, Big Brother of the Year Award recipient. Just threw that in for good measure. He's often described as the unofficial mayor of Barnstable. Brian's recognition is well deserved. His commitment to Barnstable and empowering our youth is unparalleled by the Barnstable Police Department and the town of Barnstable. Fortunate to have him and all that he contributes to our community. And just wanted to congratulate Brian and again, Mr. Reed. Like I said, this type of thing. To me, when I read both of these, I knew that these were linked. These men were linked. And he's in our community, and I just thought that it was important to recognize that they were recognized. And again, I didn't want to steal Representative Diggs or Representative Exaros's thunder. It is the award that they presented, but I just thought it would be a good idea to be able to recognize that for people of Barnstable, two very important citizens that continue to have impact on our community. And that being said, Mr. Morrison, Brian Morrison, my friend, would you like to say anything?
Sure. First of all, thank you, President Levesque, for having me on. Town Council and Town Manager, appreciate it, being here tonight. You already stole my thunder. Yes, I would definitely like to thank Mr. John Reed and congratulate him. He definitely was a trailblazer and, you know, cleared that path for younger people such as myself. And he is still going strong. So that's, he's always been someone to look up to. We used to always call him, the kids at school, we called him our second dad. You know, if our first father didn't get ahold of us, Mr. Reed certainly would. So he's always been there. He's family. So I appreciate all the work he has done. And just really thank you to Representative Exaros for nominating me as well. That was a big surprise, you know. Obviously, like Mr. Reed, we don't do things for awards and citations. We do things because the community means a lot to us, and we're trying to make it a better place for everybody. And certainly, like he said, you know, we start out as a solo act, but can't do it without the support of everybody else in the town. From the smallest person to the biggest person, you know, whatever, all walks of life, it takes a, as the old saying goes, it takes a village. And it really does. This community's been wonderful throughout everything. And I also got to thank the police for giving me opportunities for me to do what I'm doing. So it's a great job I have, and I'm lucky to be a part of such a wonderful town, born and raised. And obviously, my parents before me, they instilled great characteristics in me. So, you know, I'm proud to, it makes me proud of that. I'm doing them proud. So I'd like to thank everybody for this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Officer Morrison. I, I, I just wanted to open the floor and offer anybody else an opportunity, if you could keep your words direct and timely, and I would appreciate that. Counsel Stein Hilber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be remiss not to say anything because I've known both of these guys for a while. I still got to call him Mr. Reed because he was my teacher back in high school, American government class. And if you think back, I think all of us can think back over our school career, high school career, and, you know, maybe one, two, three teachers really stand out. And he was certainly one of those teachers for me. One of the things we had to do in his class was he would send us to the town council meeting. So probably about twenty-two years later, you know, I got elected to the council myself. So I definitely felt lucky to be a student of his back in Barnstable High School days and just been a great member of the community, so Mr. Reed. And Brian, known you for a long time. Kiwanis, all the stuff you've done in the schools, you seem to be everywhere all the time, just part of everything in the community. Feel lucky to be your friend and just an outstanding member of the community. So thank you both for all you're doing.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric.
Anybody else? Counsel Assless, please.
So I, like Eric, have had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Reed dating back to my days in high school, maybe even a little bit before that. I don't know if I was fortunate to have him as a teacher, but he was always there in the hallways, always kind, had a kind word, always had a funny word to share with me, but would always put his arm on my shoulder and offer me some words of advice. And as we got older and, you know, I became an adult and got out and more in the workforce and involved with some local activities myself, Mr. Reed was always there to offer me guidance and encouragement. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. Reed. I probably never had this opportunity to tell you before, so I'll do it now. You've been an inspiration, a role model, and I appreciate everything that you've done, not just for me personally, but for this community. And folks of all walks of life, you've touched thousands of people, and I thank you for that. Brian, man, we go back to Little League, Arnold Baker's. I think I was taller than you back then, but my, that's changed. But Brian certainly was, as long as I've known him, he's always been just a kind, giving, supportive person, always have you back, kind of guy you want to have in a dark alley with you or in a trench, I would assume. Not being in battle that way, but I think Brian's a guy I would want with me. And Brian, you know, Brian, I know you don't do it for recognition, but you deserve it. You're, believe it or not, I know you don't like to hear it, you're a pillar in this community. You set an example for so many, not just, you know, young children, but adults alike. And your, your family should be proud of you. I know they are. Your parents are proud of you, would be proud of you. Certainly, you know, nothing but the best for you and obviously for Mr. Reed. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you, Mick.
Well said, Counsel Assless. Well said. Anybody else like to say? Counsel Bogan, please.
Mr. Reed, Officer Morrison, I commend you. You are a model, not only to people of color and young people of color, you are a model for all citizens in the town of Barnstable. And the reason is, as you said, Brian, it's not because you do it for the recognition, you do it because it's the right thing to do. And it's apparent that that's been the legacy that both of you leave. So I commend you and thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bogan. Anybody else? Counsel Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. So I was always upset as a native Cape Cotter that I was not allowed to attend Barnstable High School, and I was shipped off to private school. And tonight I have one more reason to feel upset about that. So I'm sad that I never got to go to Barnstable High School and meet Mr. Reed. I feel very fortunate to know Officer Morrison. And what I want to say to you, Brian, is that the million times that I've seen you down at the Youth and Community Center with the kids, the way you are with those kids, the way those kids look at you, they love you. And that's a testament to you and how you are with them. So I am just so proud of the two of you. I really hope I get to make your acquaintance, Mr. Reed, because I felt incredibly inspired tonight hearing about all the things that you've done in your career. But congratulations, well deserved, and I'm honored to be a member of the same town as the two of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm going to give the last word, which I planned on doing anyway, to Counselor Dagewan.
All right, I'm just going to be quick. I just want to say something, Brian. Brian is the example of a community police officer. He's a natural. He just fits in with the elderly, he's great with the kids, he's great with the teens, and he's always willing to give a helping hand. And so I'm so proud that he is in our town and that he's received this award today as well. He's a great family man. I noticed when I came in so many times, he'd be taking his mother around to do various things, make sure. I mean, I love to see that, you know, just that love and care that he has for her, for not only his mother, but his father too, and his sister. Brian, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for your insight. So again, thanks for being with us. Congratulations. And, you know, I just, you know, obviously, it's an honor to be in a virtual meeting and on Beacon Hill, but I also, I hope this was able to touch you as well and show both of you how important and how revered you are in our community. So thank you for joining us. And I firmly believe you'll continue to do, you both continue to do great things. So thank you for that. I appreciate you being with us. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for, everybody who commented. Thank you for indulging me as well. As I said, I just thought just wanted to take that opportunity to recognize their recognition, I guess. So, that being said, go back to Sarah and is there anybody waiting? And I want to just open up for public comment.
Okay, first up for public comment is Megan Newman. I'm sorry, Megan Newman. Can you have three minutes?
Thanks so much. I'm here on behalf of a group of Butters, Neighbors, and Cape Cutters who are all deeply concerned about the entire nature and impact of the proposed development at 35 Cutter and the density in particular of this housing development. We'd like to understand the approval processes so that the issues related to the welfare of the community can be expressed early in the process. Before this gets any further, we'd like the following issues both carefully examined and have opportunities for public comment. The location of this 300-plus apartment cluster will be in an area currently zoned for single-family dwelling. The Greenwood Avenue neighborhood has for generations been a quiet area whose residents enjoy a backdrop of greenery and streams. The addition of a high-density housing complex would hugely impact the quality of life for longtime taxpayers abutting the property, but will also have an impact for all those living and working in the west end of Hyannis and beyond. LMC stated that the housing project will be professionally run, that subletting will be prohibited, that the price point will be attractive to teachers, police, and other middle-class professionals. But how are we to assess these claims? Have local businesses been contacted to ask if these apartments will be within the reach of their employees? How will the subletting provision be enforced? It's easy to see how this could turn into another short-term rental building, obviating what seems to be a turnkey solution, solving the rental problem in downtown Hyannis with one large project. We need more clarity on how the need for this particular type of housing has been assessed. Further, the addition of as many as 600 or more new residents in their cars in this already traffic-choked area is every local's worst nightmare, one that will ripple out well beyond the west end rotary. The added traffic will be frustrating and potentially dangerous for motorists and pedestrians, but may also limit access for fire and emergency services. The comprehensive traffic impact assessment should determine the effects of this project on the transportation and traffic systems, including both the substandard west end rotary and secondary and tertiary roads for at least a mile in all directions. What is LMC's plan for improving and underwriting the infrastructure enhancements that this project certainly demands? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Newman.
Next is Elizabeth Lewis. Ms. Lewis, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here to speak to the environment part of this letter that was given to you. This is the last green parcel left in downtown Hyannis. While it's considered already developed due to its long use as a golf course, it is in fact a forty-acre tract of burdened space and wetlands. As we are all aware, the degradation of our water systems threatens the entire Cape. Our creeks, ponds, estuaries, and bays are all part of this fragile ecosystem. We have severe wastewater issues and a threatened single-source aquifer that provides the entire Cape with drinking water. We need to closely examine how this massive complex built beside a vulnerable wetland will complicate this picture. The project should be evaluated by the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency, given how near it is to sensitive and vulnerable Stewart's Creek Estuary. We need to hear about how LMC intends to address sewer runoff, nitrogen, and the like. And if they are not prepared to a robust approach to this, then the town should walk away. Has this even been asked of LMC? Flooding and pollution. Please refer to the Massachusetts Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flooding Viewer. These maps illustrate the development's vulnerability during a significant storm, including a strong hurricane. Direct access to this area would be limited during such an event. Additionally, the USACE Stewart's Creek Project for the improvement of the approximately fourteen acres of estuary habitat of Stewart and Joshua Creeks was a hugely costly, still-evolving project. Will this development upend any progress made? How can the town prevent further degradation of the creeks, which puts Keys and Forte's beaches at further risk? Finally, we'd like to hear from you how this particular project advances the town's stated goals of smart growth in walkable communities and how it promotes and enhances the general welfare of the town. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Have a great night.
Okay, you too.
Next for public comment is Anne Schulte. Ms. Schulte, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Anne Schulte of Centerville. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. My husband Bob and I are pleased to have provided you with a citizen group petition signed by 322 citizens from all seven villages requesting the formation of a resident zoning task force. This group would be advisory in nature and have no decision-making authority. This citizen request is directly in response to your expressed interest in greater citizen engagement and on an issue of central importance to all residents. We ask and hope that each of you take residents up on their offer to work constructively and collaboratively with you. We submitted this petition under a provision that requires a town council public hearing on the subject of the petition. This was simply to show you all the seriousness of purpose. You could, of course, simply vote to create a resident zoning task force without a petition, without a hearing, or without any signatures. Indeed, from time to time, task forces and subcommittees have been created with no petition, no hearing, and even no council vote. We all hope and ask that you consider and act favorably on the merits of the request very near term. We want to make clear that the request is specifically structured not to put demands, human resource, or financial on the town. The proposal contemplates that task force members, not town staff, will be responsible for the administrative work. Please do not reject this request based on the false premise that this would put undue demands on staff. We are interested in talking with you about its details, including making sure it is value-added, consistent with our intent. I know I speak for the 322 people included in the petition when I thank you in advance for allowing them all to do so in a COVID-safe way. We followed your lead in putting public health first by so in a COVID-safe way. We followed your lead in putting public health first by avoiding personal interaction, as you do, and we all thank you for serving as role models in this respect. If any of you have questions about intent or other ideas about how to make this task force more productive, please be in touch. If anyone watching would like to see the petition, please write to ourzoning@gmail.com. That's capital O-U-R, capital Z-O-N-I-N-G. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we look forward to your positive response. Stay safe and stay well, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schulte.
Mm-hmm. Uh, next for public comment is Roberta Mark. Roberta, now's your chance to speak at public comment. You have three minutes.
Ms. Mark, are you there? Ms. Mark, you are muted.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Can we start that? Can I start now? Because I'll say what I just over again. Thank you. Okay, I'm in a unique location at eighty Greenwood. When I come down my driveway, you see my house and right behind it is creek. I get golf balls and, um, greenery where I am. Um, but more importantly, when there's a storm, I hear, I mean, there's times when there's allergic birds that hide out in this area. Um, bluebirds, uh, they need, if you notice, they put houses up on golf courses because bluebirds need the open space, uh, as part of their nesting. Um, screech owls, I know Peter Troll is on a screech owl, um, project, making boxes. Um, I think that we, we need to implore him. Um, I was at the last meeting, the corporate developers, um, LMC, um, mentioned that it would bring foot traffic. Actually, um, I want to say that I've done some studying at corporate developers, um, it, it's not solving the housing crisis. Um, they're actually creating the housing crisis by, um, grabbing, um, prime property and developing it for wealthy. And that is what causes the housing crisis. Um, I just tried to say that. Um, the Sturgis students run track and, um, I called the school, um, finding it. They, they run track and they, I see them because I, all the time. They also are using the property. They don't have a field, so they, they've been using it for golf and they've also used this whole area for track. The town uses this area, um, for quite a few functions. It's wonderful, you know, they close up the area and is running, walking and running. I kind of think that this, I don't know if this would work, and I don't know if my, my neighbors would feel the same way I do, but I, I wondered, New York City had that situation and they decided, um, you know, instead of everything being saloons, let's have some green space that are protected. Um, of course, the less traffic around that rotary, and I wouldn't call it a, um, substandard, I would call it quaint. Um, there's a lot of history with the Melody thing. Um, it, and that rotary, I, I just remember that wonderful gentleman that used to do the flowers every year, um, that used to own the golf course. I mean, there's a lot of character in this neighborhood that I'm seeing. It makes me cry to see what's happening. Um, if they took that rotary away to, to, uh, because they think that it's more important to put, um, apartments in this area, I don't understand why the town, I talked with Joe Hawley at the Barnstable Land Trust. I know they're looking for property. Um, why not use the property at the, that golf course on one thirty-two for, if we really do need more apartments that are, I don't know how affordable these are going to be, but, and, and, and keep our golf course here. Have maybe a collaboration with Hyannis Port Member Golf Course. Uh, I know one of the members there who used to be on a triathlon who did in my, in Hawaii. I, I mean, if we did, if this was something, I don't even know if, uh, this is, uh, if many people think of this, but if we, instead of using asphalt head walking and running paths and maybe a little bit of kayaking on the creek if we ever got it healthy, I'd like, I also talk to the Army Curve Engineer.
Ms. Mark, you need to wrap up your comments, please.
I'm gonna wrap up right here because we started this project by, with the floodgate. Let's finish it by restoring the herring run, bring, uh, get the mass fisheries involved with last seal project and, and really finish cleaning up this, this, this end of town. We do not need another cluster of, of, of traffic on the West End. We already have it on the other end of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Sarah, anybody else?
Uh, that is all for public comment this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for everybody who participated in public comment. Now I'd like to open the floor for council response to public comment, please. Who would like to go first? Council Logan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, with regard to Ms. Newman, Ms. Lewis, and Ms. Mark, um, your concern is genuine. That's apparent. Um, and you were echoing many of the sentiments that were expressed at the last meeting. I can assure you that we, as a council, will do our best to evaluate all of the concerns that you have raised, whether they be traffic-related, environmental-related, and whether or not it's the best use of the property. So we do hear you and, and thank you for, for making your views heard. Um, as to Ms. Schulte, uh, thanks as always for your voice and consummate presentation. Um, you, you, I guess what I would say is it, it is admirable that you folks took on the task of eliciting the signatures. Three twenty-two in a very short period of time is laudable. Uh, the president has said continuously that he is committed to, uh, public civic engagement. Um, and I can assure you, we will take that under consideration as we consider the petition. Um, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Council Logan, excuse me. Council Cullen, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things I, I didn't speak quickly enough with , um, regard to Mr. Reed and, um, and Officer Morrison, and I just wanted to say one thing that helped me when I was a new counselor, when I was looking to kind of jumpstart the youth commission and, um, and also get the Achievers program going, that, that, you know, Mr. Reed was instrumental in explaining to me how the youth commission could be helpful. And then, um, Officer Morrison really took the Achievers and ran with that as a, as a mentor on that, on that project, and I think still is on that project. Um, but just, you know, really, really great men that have formatively changed Barnstable for the better, and I can't thank them for their patience and, and teaching, um, when it, when I was new. I really appreciate that. So congratulations on that. I'm sorry I'm late on that. And then for the folks on the thirty-five, um, Scudder property, thank you all for coming. I, I've been in touch with, um, Deb Crowe from the Hyannis Civic Association and also, um, Kim McGuire and her, and her husband, Brian Hughes. And I know that they're, they're really involved in engaging everyone and getting everybody on the same page, um, with regard to LMC. And I know that there's an upcoming meeting that Deb Crowe has arranged between LMC and the neighborhood. Um, I'm gonna ask that Elizabeth Jenkins flesh out process one more time so people know what the steps are going forward and maybe feel a little bit more comfortable with, um, MEPA and, and all the other, um, hoops that people are gonna be jumping through at LMC to, to, um, as they progress with their idea. Um, and, um, again, thank you very much for coming out and, and sharing your concerns. I hope that, uh, we can alleviate some of them as we go forward and that at least you wouldn't have the process in front of you so you can understand where public comment is, is, um, is important. Um, it always is here, but maybe at the county level or in other areas as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Cullen. Council Heber, you had your hand up earlier. Would you like to comment, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I would, uh, copy, uh, all the statements of, uh, Council Cullen, uh, in regards to, uh, Brian and to John, uh, two, two fine men, uh, that were blessed to have in our community. And most times, wherever you go, there was a need and they were there. So, um, again, uh, thank you very much. Uh, in regards to, uh, our folks, Elizabeth and, uh, Roberta and Megan, uh, in regards to the development, we're still, I consider very much at the beginning, and all your points are well-taken, message heard, message delivered, uh, and I think the task of all of us, uh, to continue to weigh out the pros and the cons and the safety issues and the environmental issues. Uh, so thank you for speaking tonight. Um, and to, uh, Anne Schulte, thank you for, um, speaking up tonight. Thank you for sending out the reminder, uh, and sending out the petition that you put forth. Um, I think that the council has many times, including the leadership, has expressed the need, uh, to engage and to appreciate, uh, the wisdom and the work and the, uh, contribution to our town that our citizens are making. So, uh, I'm hopeful that the council will pick up your petition, uh, and that we will take it, uh, very seriously. And, um, my, my hope is that we see a task force. Uh, yet to be seen, but thank you so much for all coming out tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Heber. Anybody else? Just standing on. Make the presence known, any other response?
Oh. Council Star.
Thank you.
Are we gonna, is, can, can Ms. Jenkins explain the process? Just at least what the next step or two is where local people could get involved and, and feel like they know what the next step is. Thank you.
Director Jenkins, would you like to respond?
I'd be happy to. Good evening, councilors, members of the public. Elizabeth Jenkins, uh, Director of Planning and Development. Uh, last week, the proposed development at thirty-five Scudder, um, had a hearing before the Cape Cod Commission on the development review process, uh, through which this proposed development, uh, will be considered by the commission. The commission did vote affirmatively to, uh, allow the developer to go through a development agreement process, uh, for review of the proposed development. At this point, the developer has not submitted an application, um, for a development agreement, but that is the anticipated next step in the process. That application, again, would be filed with the Cape Cod Commission, and I, I imagine, um, will have an abundance of information, uh, for the community, uh, for the Cape Cod Commission and for the council on issues that were raised tonight, like traffic, um, environment, environmental impact, affordability, um, and so on. So the initial public hearings, uh, will be held at the Cape Cod Commission. Uh, we do anticipate, uh, should the, should the development review progress to the town, that there be additional hearings, uh, public hearings at the town, uh, by the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, as well as the council. Um, so, you know, we're happy to keep the council, uh, and the public informed of the process, uh, the development review process as it proceeds. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I follow up with a quick question?
You may.
I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone knows where they can get that information. So I know that you've included myself and Deb Crowe, and I believe Kim McGuire in those, in those, um, communications in the past, and I just want to make sure that they know who to contact, or that maybe I can talk to Deb Crowe about forwarding your emails about next steps, um, uh, in the future. So is that correct that you email Deb Crowe?
That's correct. So we've met, um, with the Civic Association, uh, and indicated that, you know, of course we want, um, we want to maximize communication on this process. And even though the development review process doesn't start with us, um, we're certainly involved and, and we play a role in that, that initial conversation and that negotiation with the commission. So to that end, yes, we've agreed to make sure that information about upcoming hearings are communicated to the Civic Association, and we'll continue to send those to the Civic Association President to distribute to her membership or whoever sees, she sees fit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Council, Council, you have a question?
I just took a comment and a question, uh, Mr. President, uh, through you, um, regarding the, um, residential zoning task force, uh, public comment tonight by Mrs. Schulte. Um, you know, it's a sensible idea, supports and encourages, uh, public engagement, which, uh, I know we're all, we're all for here on this council. Uh, my question is, um, and I think I need to defer to Town Manager Els on this, how does it relate to, um, our comprehensive plan, uh, forming a task force like that potentially? Thank you.
Town Manager Els, would you like to comment?
Actually, later in the agenda, we're gonna get into discussing the steering committee that's associated with the local comprehensive plan. Um, you know, I, I think that, well, the petition before town council, um, is something that we can be considered by town council, certainly, and, you know, the merits of considering what's being asked. Relative to the public engagement process, my suggestion would be, um, that we look at what we're creating with the local comprehensive plan as far as the steering committee. And we also begin to look at, because that will be a limited number of participants, we begin to look at what other active groups are going to be created as part of moving forward with our local comprehensive. A major part of that is always looking at the zoning within our community. And whatever the decision of the town council relevant to the request for a citizen task force, that we make sure that it complements and works with the efforts that we're going to embark on here with the local comprehensive plan. And I would recommend that we look to our, uh, Planning and Development Director to share with us how we would go forward, certainly with, um, local comprehensive planning and engagement of the public, and, um, certainly a discussion moving forward relevant to, um, you know, public engagement and zoning, and make sure that it's something that satisfies our community and the town council, and the needs of moving forward with the local comprehensive. So I know that's kind of a larger answer, but we've got some major efforts, I'm assuming, uh, that we're embarking on here, and we want to make sure that our citizens are heard, their comments are, you know, are, are, are part of what we consider moving forward, um, and that we do it, and is it effective, we do it in, in as effective means as we can. That answer your question, Councilor?
It does. Thank you.
Excellent. And again, we will touch on that, um, later on in the agenda, um, you know, a little bit more in-depth, um, continually explaining that. I just wanted to make that clear as well. The, any other councillor comments? Not seeing any?
Sorry, Council President.
I'm sorry. Council Clark, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this time. Um, in, in hearing the concerns for the, of the residents, uh, regarding the thirty-five Scudder development, and also hearing that we want to maximize, um, public engagement or at least, um, um, knowledge, dissemination of knowledge and, and opportunities to weigh in, I was wondering if, even though this has been driven or is now in the, um, custody of the Cape Cod Commission, if a link could be set up under, uh, Planning and Development page that might say next phase is this, or, um, upcoming is this, or, or sign up for updates, as you have with some of the other large issues like short-term rentals in eighty years, because it's more than the West, more than the Hyannis Civic Association that may have interest in this project, but a broader section of our, um, of our town. Tom Reddick. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark.
May I make one comment?
Um, I'm sorry, um.
This is Roberta.
I know. Uh, Ms. Mark, uh, this is, uh, there's not a, a back and forth in regards to that.
No, it's not a back and forth. It was because I was.
This is Mark. Ms. Mark.
I'm going with my, um.
Mark, it, it, I'm sorry. There's no, um, further comment. Uh, you can feel free to, if you have a direct question, you can find any of our contact information on the website, and you can feel free to contact us. But, um, unfortunately, there isn't, um, any response after councillor comment. Council Dagwone, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I live in the area where the proposed, um, Scudder project is. I've lived in that area for forty years now, and the traffic has really, um, increased. Although the town needs the housing, needs the revenue, um, very important. Um, there was also a performing arts center that was proposed there that didn't fail, and it failed for the same reason, um, traffic. I, and I haven't seen anyone come forth with a suitable traffic plan that I would support. The traffic has doubled. So for me, I would So for me, I would not move forward on this project, because I would never get out of my house, I'd never get around the block, and the lunch hour between 12, 12 and 2, it's just backed up. And so that hasn't been addressed, so that concerns me. Now, that would, that's my major reason why I wouldn't support the project. And I just want to say to those about the task force that, you know, it's always nice to have civic engagement. If we don't get the task force, there's a, you know, there are other opportunities to the town to accomplish the same thing. There are some 30 or so subcommittees here, they're all advisory, that's another good way to listen in and find out the process, and as our Town Manager said, support our Elizabeth, who is such a jewel, last year in the town. She knows what she's doing, and she can be very helpful to any of you. Just consider those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dagwone. Counselor Star, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Philbeck. I think I have a question for Katie Conley. So what, what is our next step with the petition? Does the Town Council have to, we need a legal opinion, whether it's a legal petition, and then we vote on it to accept it? What, what happens next?
Attorney Conley, if you want to answer that, or Attorney Nober, if you'd like to answer that?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Thank you, Mr. President. Karen Nober, Town Attorney. The petition that was submitted actually did not have any signatures of the residents of the town. It's required to have, I believe, 150 signatures of registered voters. So it's not actually an official petition. Having said that, you know, the council can obviously consider what's being asked in the same way you would consider something that was raised, you know, at public comment. But the petition itself did not comply with the requirements of the charter.
So, so what's our next move? Can we, can, can somebody make a motion to accept it the way it is?
I, I would not accept it the way it is, because, again, I would not deviate from what the charter requires. But, again, that does not mean that the council could not consider whatever it wishes to consider with respect to the subject matter of the petition.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Bogan.
Not to belabor the point, but, and certainly, Mr. President, or Attorney Nober can correct me, as I understand it, Counselor Star, because the petition was submitted with electronic signatures but not wet signatures, the town clerk could not accept it. But to your point, and I think the President alluded to it earlier, that does not, and the Town Council just alluded to it, that doesn't mean that the, the council itself could not do something, which goes to your question of, well, does it require a motion? As I understood what the Town Manager said and what the President has said, it's basically going to be taken under advisement for the moment, and we're going to figure out the best way to do what they want to do, given what is before. Obviously, we don't want it to languish, but I, it's not going to fall on deaf ears. We're not going to let function overrule what is the best thing for us to do, or form to overdo function.
And if I could just add to that, if you were going to make a motion, I would not do it at this meeting, only because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. No, and I, and, no, thank you, Mr. Bogan. I think that they clarify, I mean, I think when we get to the local comprehensive plan and the process involved in that, we'll understand better how it all fits together. Thank you.
I love it when a plan comes together, both comments basically echo what I was going to say, because we were not going to, we obviously, we were listening all along anyway without receiving a petition. We responded, we're considering it, and again, yes, some of this subject matter, I think, let's just give it some time, or we talked about, as far as public engagement goes, this local comprehensive plan that's coming up on the agenda tonight directly is because of public engagement. And this is the, the plan of all plans. This is the plan that is the foundation, that all master plans are linked to. And without trying to put the cart before the horse, this is something that needs to be done every 10 years. And it's been over 10 years. That's why we're here today, and that's why it's on the agenda, and leadership, Vice President Snap and I, and the Town Manager's office, that's why we put it on there. So that will, again, we can have continued discussion, but thank you for everybody, for your comments, and, and again, putting the importance on public engagement, because that is what we're trying to do here, in the right process, and doing the right things for the right reasons. Thank you. So without any other, seeing a further comment, I would like to turn it over to Town Manager Els for our Town Manager.
Counselor, Counselor Neary had a comment? Counselor Neary?
Yes, yes, just a quick one, and, and I apologize, Mr. President. I just, just wanted to state that I, I've had an opportunity to speak with Bob Schulte and to echo your words, this will not fall on deaf ears. I, I did pick up on Ann's comments, I, I misunderstood it, I thought it was rzoning.com as if it was a website. It's actually rzoning@gmail.com for comments or folks that want to tie into that or receive information. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary, for that clarification. Okay. Now, back to you, Town Manager Els, for Town Manager Communication.
Good evening, and thank you, Mark Els. I'll take one second before doing my Town Manager Communication to congratulate John Reed and Brian Morrison. I, I get to wear a more important hat than Town Manager, and it's the father of six children in this community. And I can tell you that both of these individuals have had an impact on my children. You know, my oldest daughter, Elizabeth, knew Mr. Reed, and he got to interact with her in youth programming, and had such a positive influence. And, you know, that, that as a, as a parent certainly is, is maybe the most rewarding thing that we see others do with us and for us. And certainly, Brian Morrison knows all of my, and my children know, trust, and look to Officer Morrison. And I can't thank them enough for taking the time to make a difference in our community. So as your Town Manager, thank you both. You've made a difference, a positive difference.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. Mark Els, Town Manager, this is my Town Manager update for the period of February 19 through March 4. We'll begin the Town Manager update with Assistant Town Manager Clyburn, providing an update relevant to COVID vaccination efforts in Barnstable.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Town Councilors. I'm Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn. Joining with, joining me this evening is Hyannis Fire Chief Peter Burke to brief you on the latest vaccination efforts in Barnstable, and hopefully answer any questions you may have. Before I begin, though, I cannot be on TV tonight without recognizing a group of Coast Guard heroes from Air Station Cape Cod for helping rescue 31 fishermen from a disabled vessel 130 miles south of Halifax this week. I would lose my retired captain status if I did so, so indulge me. The helicopter crews from our Air Station Cape Cod hoisted 21 fishermen to safety battling 30-foot sea, 50 knot winds. Bravo Zulu to them. Now for the COVID brief. I'll caveat the brief, as I have with each update to date, stating that I can assure you that whatever I tell you this evening will change, most likely more than once, and most likely as soon as tomorrow. As you know, the supply of COVID vaccine is extremely limited. That has not changed. However, we are optimistic that with the addition of a third vaccination option, we could see increased supply in the very near future. To date, we have requested, received, and administered less than 1,000 doses through our local health division in Hyannis Fire, despite ordering thousands of doses. Those efforts were in Phase 1 and have already been briefed. This week, we were notified that we're going to be receiving 300 doses next week, and we have a plan to go out to four Barnstable Housing Authority locations next Thursday and Friday. We have had productive conversations with Harbor Healthcare, who is currently doing 50 to 100 doses a day at the Zion Church, about partnering with them to increase their capacity. We're very optimistic that in the coming week, we may be able to pivot their operation to the Barnstable Adult Community Center, I'm sorry, the Barnstable Adult Senior Center, and significantly increase the number of vaccines administered. Of course, again, that only happens if Harbor Healthcare is able to get the increased supply from DPA. We have the resources and the infrastructure to vaccinate, it's simply a lack of supply. One noteworthy, noteworthy development has been the approval of the Cape Cod COVID vaccine consortium led by Cape Cod Healthcare in Barnstable County. This consortium is now receiving vaccine and running vaccination clinics at Four Seas. Cape Cod Healthcare and Barnstable County are both vaccinated at Four Seas. Barnstable County has been administering the Pfizer vaccine, and Cape Cod Healthcare has been administering the Moderna vaccine. This week, over 2,000 doses were administered, and plans are in place to ramp that up to approximately 4,000 doses per week moving forward. The first week, the first few days of this week were all second-dose clinics. Today, Cape Cod Healthcare started a first-dose clinic for Moderna, and Barnstable County continued second-dose Pfizer vaccine. Patients have the option, option to sit inside for their observation period or wait in their vehicle. Nurses are located outside in the parking lot to not only keep an eye for adverse reactions, but also to vaccinate anyone who is scheduled for an appointment but is not physically able to walk into the building. Traffic flow is controlled by Four Seas officers and volunteers, and flowed nicely. Our safety officer, Megan Savage, has been our liaison to the site. Feedback from participants has been positive, with most everyone saying it was an excellent experience and very well-run. There was minimal wait time and well-organized, considering you had two, two clinic running concurrently. As part of our role in the Cape Cod COVID-19 vaccine consortium, our Barnstable Council on Aging is identifying vulnerable adults over the age of 65 left behind by the current vaccine offering. Specifically, individuals who need assistance making vaccination appointments but are able to travel to Four Seas. In an effort to expand upon the robust information that our Council on Aging currently has, we will be asking anyone in this group, or anyone helping someone in this group, to provide information by email. The email address to send this information to will be put out by separate communication tomorrow. This is an effort to help our Council on Aging staff handle the volume of inquiries they're receiving relative to COVID. Phone line is also being established specifically for this purpose, which should also be operational tomorrow. We are not booking vaccination appointments. We are attempting to connect, to connect our seniors with Cape Cod Healthcare for direct vaccination appointment scheduling. In addition to this outreach through our Council on Aging, we've been actively working with our partners in the Brazilian community to help identify vaccine-eligible members of the community and link them to potential vaccine provider. There are too many people to thank on that front, but clearly, Michael Messinas of Health Ministries deserves recognition for his outreach to all the pastors of Brazilian churches and his use of social media to further his outreach to the community. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have for Chief Burke and I.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Philbeck, and thank you for that presentation, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn. You said this email will be going out, is that going to be delivered to people with emails? And will it be available somewhere for folks without emails to get to tell their friends?
Absolutely. We're going to be pushing it out as widely as we can. We're very fortunate that our Council on Aging is so involved in the community that we were well ahead of this ever-changing playbook, that we have many, many contacts, and we've been able to already put a lot of folks in touch. But, yeah, we plan on disseminating it as widely as we can. It is a challenge, as you alluded to, we're trying to target a lot of folks that don't have email, don't have internet, and as we've been ever-evolving, trying to develop that solution, we keep, you know, we get to the point where, you know, perhaps this is the solution, and then we realize, well, that solution is not going to work, because it's precisely the IT solution that this population doesn't have. So, yes. Or the initial emails preferred simply for a volume, but we're going to be reaching out and establishing the phone line, like I said. This will be going out, we can reach out through Council on Aging Elder Affairs and touch tons of people, as well as all of our social media, et cetera. So, yes, we're going to do our best to connect folks. This is not a, you know, the Commonwealth is not shifting its vaccination scheduling to Madeline Noonan. I, I don't want there to be any, any doubt that, the intent of this is to connect a very targeted group that isn't able to otherwise get appointments with Cape Cod Healthcare. So, you know, we ask that that group, or if you have loved ones in that group, certainly use us. We want to do our best to make that connection, but this is not another pathway to vaccination for those that are anxious.
Can I make a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much. I know in West Barnstable, I have been in touch with the Director, Donald Murray Burn, about some elders who are homebound and do not have access, so I know that that is a harder read, but it's causing a fair amount of anxiety in that sector of the population.
Sure, if I might address that. Clearly, this particular endeavor to connect folks that can go to Four Seas, one thing, the homebound is a whole separate issue that we are addressing. We are working to get, I think we're at about 150 to 180 now, and by the end of next week, the determination is going to be made how we handle that. Obviously, we've met with all of our fire districts, they're all in, if we end up taking it, the state also has a program that perhaps they take that on, but we are working through that, they are on the radar, and they will be reading.
I'll volunteer to drive nurses around. Thank you.
Any other questions for Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I just wanted to add, for Counselor Clark's benefit, that the Adult Community Center, they have been calling a lot of these people for this entire 12 months, so they do reach out weekly by telephone. So they will not, you know, when they've identified these people, they're not going to email. They, this will be a person-to-person call with them.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Just a, a piggyback, and, and thank you for recognizing the good work that Michael Messinas and all of those at HealthMinistriesUSA.org, what they're doing, not only with the Brazilian community, with the Latino community, who's a gifted gentleman that, you know, speaks all these languages and can communicate in ways that not everyone can. So he uses resources to benefit that community is unparalleled. So, thank you. Without seeing other, any other questions, thank you, Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, and I would bring it back to Town Manager Els for continued communication.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Town Manager. The next item on the agenda is Lynn Poyad, our Director of Communications, and Lynn will share our video that walks you through the BarnstableWaterResources.com button on our homepage. Lynn?
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Town Council, President.
Good evening, Town Council, President Vivek. It is my pleasure, as you know, communications staff worked very hard to create the BarnstableWaterResources.com website. Specifically, I'd like to mention by name Paula Hersi, who did yeoman's work on this project. And there's a multitude of information there, and people were saying, geez, it would be great if we could have someone to explain how to use this website. So I'm going to ask our award-winning Channel 18 staff, Sarah Beal, Paula Hersi, Chris Letta, and Stone Dow, created a video that is at the top of the website, and I'm going to ask Sarah if she can show the screen so that people will see how to get to it, and then she's going to play the video for you now.
Sorry, Lynn, you wanted me to share the website as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, just one second.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Not a problem. I have the technology. So the first thing is, a lot of you have seen already, if you want to go to BarnstableWaterResources.com, the easiest way to get to it is from the homepage of the town's website. There's a link right here on the left-hand side, Barnstable Water Resources, and that will bring you directly to BarnstableWaterResources.com on the website as it loads. There's a wonderful amount of videos that we have here, but the very first video we'll see is this CWMP web guide. I'm actually going to show it to you from my computer, just so that I'm sure that it plays, so everybody can see it and hear it well. So here's the web guide video for you all.
Water quality is one of the most important factors in a healthy ecosystem, and clean water supports a diversity of plants and wildlife. Though it may seem unrelated at first, our actions on land affect the quality of our water. The town of Barnstable's commitment to ensuring that our water quality is healthy for future generations has begun implementing the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, or more commonly known as the CWMP. The Barnstable Water Resources website is designed to help you and your family learn more about the factors that affect our water quality, the traditional and non-traditional solutions to some of the challenges we face as a community and region. Need to learn why the town of Barnstable has a CWMP? The steps it took to create it? And some of the frequently asked questions? Head to the wastewater plan link to begin your journey. Are you a property owner in Barnstable and want to learn more about the financial solutions that are available to the town to fund this 30-year plan? The funding, the plan link, has the draft sewer ordinance document and information from the Director of Finance that explains funding the CWMP equitably and fairly. Need to find a press release or meeting schedule? Would you like CWMP updates delivered straight to your inbox? The News and Updates section has all that and a sign-up for the Community Current Newsletter. There are many facets to protecting water quality. Would you like to learn more about protecting drinking water? Our lakes and ponds? Aquaculture solutions? Or how sewers and pump stations work? The Water Quality Topics link is a great place to start discovering these subjects and how you can make a difference in protecting our water quality. There is so much to explore and learn. Check out the library link, where you'll find archives of documents, videos, and even some maps. We are glad you're here. Water quality is important to all of us. Take some time to explore the many areas of this new website and bookmark for the future. Together, we will make sure that our water is healthy for future generations.
Very good. Nice, you know, to the point. And, you know, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Paula. Not only your video capabilities, but also your wonderful narrating skills. So, yes, that was an excellent presentation. Town Manager Ellis?
Thank you. Thank you. I'll continue on with my items and my, I'm interrupting. Town of Barnstable was informed on February 16, 2021, that Conservation Law Foundation filed a Clean Water Act complaint against the town, and CLF have, but the CLF have not yet served the town with the complaint, and the litigation process doesn't start until they serve the town. So we are continuing to pursue discussions with CLF, and we will keep you advised through future executive sessions as we progress through this legal matter. The town of Barnstable has led the region's efforts to protect and preserve our water quality, and with recent state approval of its Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, a 30-year plan focused on protecting the health of coastal inland and drinking water quality, we embark on perhaps the most aggressive infrastructure and resource protection plan in the history of our community. We engaged our community in the next phase of the plan involving the review of fiscal policy to support the implementation of the approved CWMP. And the, thank you, Director Poyant, for walking us through that. All I got to do is get people to the homepage and click on that button. If they can do that, then hopefully we can guide them through the use of gaining more information on this effort. A special Town Council meeting was held on October 29, 2020 to discuss proposed fiscal policy considerations in support of implementation of the CWMP. We've also provided subsequent reviews with Town Council and Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, which Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee's review and report has been provided to Town Council at this point, civic groups, and the general public, and we will continue to do so as we progress through this important discussion. Fiscal policy under consideration would establish how to equitably distribute the remaining costs of our CWMP. And I propose to Town Council the following two-step approach. First, review and approve the proposed sewer assessment ordinance, which includes a sewer assessment to each individual property receiving the planned sewer. And then, second, discuss the use of general funds to pay for the remaining portion of costs associated with proceeding with the CWMP. The town has stressed the importance of community engagement in the development and implementation of this Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including the proposed sewer assessment ordinance. The following is intended to provide the Town Council with a brief update on outreach and community engagement regarding these efforts. Relative to public engagement sessions, public engagement sessions to discuss the proposed sewer assessment ordinance were held on February 25 at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. The sessions were publicized in the local media via social media, by email and e-news, sent directly to civic association and other community groups and individuals, and on Channel 18. The virtual engagement sessions were conducted via Zoom as a webinar and streamed live on Facebook and aired live on Channel 18 and streamlined on the town's website. Approximately 150 citizens participated in the live session via Zoom and Facebook and many others viewed live on Channel 18. The sessions were recorded and posted to the website, and to date, there have been more than 2,000 viewings of the three presentations. The next public engagement sessions are planned on March 25 at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m., and will be widely publicized in the community and will follow the same format. Meetings and presentations. Since 2016, more than 75 presentations regarding the CWMP have been made to the Town Council, community groups, Town committees, and staff. Many of these sessions have been recorded and are available for viewing on the town's website. The Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, DPW Director, and Assistant Director, and Town Engineer continue to provide presentations to a wide variety of civic groups and town officials. The focus of the meetings vary based on the group's interests and may encompass a CWMP overview, details on design issues, discussion of proposed sewer assessment ordinance. In the last 60 days, presentations have been made to Town Council, Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, Centerville Civic Association, West Barnstable Civic Association, Barnstable Youth Commission, Ostable Village Association, District Fire Chiefs, and the Quarket Lake Protective Association, among, among others, or including others beyond that. Direct outreach is being made to all civic and village association and other businesses and community organizations to send them information about the CWMP and the proposed sewer assessment ordinance, and to make town staff available for special presentations and discussions with each individual group and their membership. Our website Director Poyant has just reviewed with you, provides access to current news and information about the CWMP and the implementation efforts. Property owners can use the site to property lookup to find out if their property is included in one of the three sewer expansion phases. An introductory video that you've just viewed has been added to the homepage to introduce users to the site and explain where they can find information. The site provides access to primary documents such as the CWMP and the draft ordinance, as well as summaries of these and other materials. Site visitors are encouraged to sign up for the Community Current e-newsletter, which will be distributed electronically to provide regular updates on the CWMP, construction schedules, Town Council meetings and hearings, and other pertinent news. And then additional measures. Town Communications Officer's, Office Staff is working with the Town Manager, DPW, and Finance Department to develop other communication tools, including brochures, explanatory videos, and various social media platforms. An Instagram page focused on water was added to the mix on December 23, and we currently have over 1,000 followers, and many are unique as they are not following the town's Facebook page or Twitter page. The Town of Barnstable YouTube channel, also with a water focus, was recently created and will keep you advised of our progress on this important effort. We also have compiled the questions that were asked, the answers given, and other information from that February, from that February 25 series of webinars, and we'll be sharing that with the Council shortly. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY22 as scheduled. We finalized the proposed FY22 capital improvement program and the plan to submit the proposed FY22 capital budget and plan to submit on Monday, March 8. So you get a hard copy of that, and you may get an electronic copy on the 8th or before the 8th. The first read of the proposed FY22 capital plan is scheduled for March 18, and the public hearings are planned to commence on April 1, 2021. We are commencing final internal review of the proposed FY22 operating budget. And we're beginning that March 22, 2021. And we, as I've described to you before, we are planning to present a level service budget proposed for FY22 to Town Council this year. As you remember, we went from a level of service to a level funded budget, actually, it's a slight reduction in FY21 in response to the fiscal impacts of COVID. We feel confident, and Director Milner shared with you our revenue projections. So going into '22, we are returning to a level service budget proposal. And all this can be viewed on the town's webpage. We continue with regular conversations with Vineyard Wind regarding the status of the Phase One and Phase Two project. Vineyard Wind continues to work with Barnstable staff regarding both phases of the project. They anticipate commencing construction on Phase One in the spring of 2021 and are proceeding with permitting on Phase Two. We have engaged in discussions with Vineyard Wind regarding a host agreement for the potential of Phase Three. Vineyard Wind is scheduled to provide an update to Town Council on the status of their projects, both current and future, later this evening. We will keep you advised as, as this project progresses. That concludes the manager's portion of the update. I do have two updates. First, by Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning, and then followed by David Anthony, Director of Property and Risk Management. So if you'd like to ask me any questions, certainly I'll do that, and then I'll ask Director Jenkins to come up for her presentation.
Thank you, Town Manager Ellis. Any questions for Town Manager Ellis? Counselor Raprasetti, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mark, for the update. You know, I have to, I was not able to participate in the February 25 webinar, but being mindful that it's one Cape and one Aquifer and one town. I'm just curious, what would the rationale, this is regards to the sewer assessment, what was the rationale for not including all properties that have bedrooms or will have bedrooms contribute to the cost of sewer? You know, where the sewer assessment was talking about just those that would be affected in the particular phases. And I'm just curious, and I don't have to have the answer tonight, but I'll be looking for that answer as to why the entire town is not being assessed to help in the efforts to clean the waters.
Well, I'll attempt to answer a portion of that, and I hope as we progress through this, we ask that and more specific questions. We are looking for our entire community to participate in this. The sewer assess, the proposed sewer assessment that will be under consideration by Town Council is only a portion of generating revenue to cover the cost of expanding the recommended searing portion of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. Because as you know, that involves more than just searing, but that's where we're focusing on this discussion. So what the proposed sewer assessment does is assess directly an amount of money to those that are receiving the sewer. If we reflect back on what we presented today, about 57% of the cost will cover, will cover that portion of the sewer expansion. A decision will be made by Town Council whether or not to assess a sewer assessment, and then what the dollar amount will be. That will cover a portion of that cost. And then the remaining piece of that would be covered through the use of general funds. General funds means that every taxpayer in our community pay a portion of that. Now, you can't assess, maybe to come more specifically to the question of sewer assessment, you can't assess everybody a sewer assessment. You can, under the law, you can only assess those receiving the ability to connect to the sewer a sewer assessment. So really, we have broken it up into pieces, and Director Milner explained that the reason we believe a sewer assessment is appropriate and not just go all general fund is that when a property is seared, it gains value. It gains value by the sheer fact that it has a reliable source of waste disposal. It gains value by the fact that in the future, it's not going to replace, have to replace an onsite system, and therefore, some portion of this cost should at least be considered being assessed to those properties that receive this asset. And that's the logic behind why a portion of it is being recommended. The next discussion in step two is how will we deal with general fund? And we'll be taking that up after we know where the council is interested in proceeding with the proposed sewer assessment ordinance. Does that begin to answer the question?
It, it does, and you know, I know there's many people that are concerned that the cost of the sewer assessment will, being borne on just those that are receiving the sewer, might not be so equitable in the long run. Sure, they have to pay to be hooked up to the sewer, but in the long run, a portion of our town being sewer or, or, you know, not every house being sewed is going to benefit all of us as far as our water quality, so. But I don't want to get into the sewer assessment debate tonight, but that's something that is of concern, and I've always felt that, I think everybody in the town of Barnstable should pay equitably and across the board on, on bettering our, our water quality. But more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Raprasetti. Great question, and thank you for your response, Town Manager Ls. Good answer. Anybody else, or Town Manager Ls? Not seeing any other hand? If you would like to introduce the next part of your Town Council Communication Manager, Town Manager Ls?
I would, thank you. At this point, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, will provide an overview of the town's establishment of a steering committee for the local comprehensive
Thank you, Manager Ls. Good evening, Elizabeth Jenkins. On January 4th, I provided you with information on the local comprehensive planning process and why it's appropriate and important that we begin this with our community now. I'm here tonight to give you the first of what I will hope, of what I hope will be regular updates on the development of our local comprehensive plan, or LCP. And I'll be back later tonight to ask for your support to kick off the first step in this process, which is a community visioning project. Among the goals of a local comprehensive planning process is to connect the community with the town and to each other around a unified vision for our future, and to bring the voice of the community into the major decisions about growth and infrastructure with which we're faced, and to take that community input and carry it through to actions such as capital infrastructure planning, budget and resource allocation, and yes, zoning and other regulatory changes. The local comprehensive plan, and especially this first step, the formulation of a community vision, is one that we anticipate to be done for our community, by our community. And it's this first step in engagement and outreach that I'm here to report on, and that's the formation of a local comprehensive planning committee. Simply put, the LCP committee has the primary responsibility for development of the town's local comprehensive plan. The authority and process for establishing the LCP committee is derived from the Cape Cod Commission Act, and in Barnstable, that authority sits with the town manager. But as other guidance provides, achieving consensus and support of the Town Council on the local comprehensive planning committee is fundamental to the success of this process, beginning to end. So to meet these requirements and these goals, the process proposed is to have the town manager establish the committee, to have him work collaboratively with Town Council leadership on appointments, and to bring those appointments to the full council to be ratified. In terms of appointments, staff and planning and development has spoken with the Cape Cod Commission, and our team has looked at LCP examples in many other communities. Of course, ultimately, it's important that this committee be representative and diverse to allow the many voices in our community to be heard. And in consideration of the various issue areas that our plan must ultimately address, we suggest that consideration be given to the talented individuals that serve currently or formally on our boards and committees in areas that include planning and zoning, conservation, open space and resource protection, public health, housing and economic development, infrastructure and finance, youth and education, as well as several spots that are left open to assure again, representation and diversity on the committee. And finally, consider the participation of ex officio members from the bodies that will be asked to finally approve the plan. In the coming weeks, we would like to work with the council to put out a call for members, establish an application or letter of interest process, and to put forward a committee to the council for ratification that will successfully guide our community visioning and local comprehensive planning process. I welcome your comments or questions now or in the coming days, and I thank you for your time on this issue.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. I for one am excited about the opportunity to, you know, again, engage the public to, you know, this is an opportunity to, again, not, nothing, nothing is wrong with what we've done before, it's just to set a path to where we're going and set goals and, you know, and move forward. So I am excited about that opportunity to be able to do that with the community as a whole, representing all the villages and demographics, diversity, and I look forward to the opportunity with working with Manager Ls to make those, make that, make that happen. So that being said, is there any other, is there any comments, questions for Director Jenkins? Counsel Hebert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So Elizabeth, if we're going to invite folks from our various boards and commissions to be part of this, if I heard you correctly, we would be inviting some of our citizens who are already serving on boards and commissions to participate in, in the bigger, the bigger group. Am I correct? Is that what you're saying?
I do think we should give consideration to individuals on boards, committees, and commissions. It's very customary in terms of the process and actually encouraged by some of the guidance that's put out by the Cape Cod Commission. As we progress in this process, we'll be required to speak to various issue areas that are laid out for us by the Cape Cod Commission, you know, including, including our built environment and infrastructure, our, our natural resources, our community systems that work. And so it seems that, you know, we have a good, a good cross-section of people to pull from that have experience with the town that are from those boards, committees, and commissions, you know, should the opportunity and fit in there.
But, so then included, if I could just, so included would be a broad spectrum of representatives from our various villages would also participate.
Yeah, ultimately, I think in terms of consideration of group development, yes, we would want to see representation, you know, this is a townwide effort, one that's going to represent our entire community, and, and certainly the, the uniqueness of our individual villages and their voices have to be represented in this process.
Thank you very much.
If I might add to that? Thank you. You know, my understanding of this process is that the steering committee is kind of a formal requirement of what we're embarking on, but to achieve true engagement by our community, it can't be limited to a small group of people. And I very much expect that there are going to be certainly subgroups representing, you know, whether it be village, or housing, or, you know, any issue that is a priority, natural resource and protection. And it's our intent to engage, appropriately engage, any and all in this process. And I think that Director Jenkins is mindful of that and is making sure that we give enough time to achieve that. And so that's, that's about what I, that's what I understand of the process and that we intend to achieve with the process.
Thank, thank you for that, Town Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hebert, and Counsel Scott, and then Counsel Logan.
No, I, Ms. Jenkins, I, what I see is the, the steering committee is just a, is a steering committee that will pull in lots of different groups and hear, hear from different stakeholders many times. I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're in charge of, of pulling in all the people and, and including the public. So we're not, we're not including everybody on the steering committee. Is that right?
Exactly. I mean, I see a fundamental function of this steering committee is to, you know, to, I think, you know, ensure that this process, which is, you know, at its core, a public outreach and engagement process, be representative, be inclusive, again, of all in our communities, to help, of course, spread the word about this project to various networks, and to bring awareness of, of history and context and current conversation, you know, to, to all of these engagement efforts that go forward. And certainly, when I talk about the, the community visioning process, as we envision it later, and, and as we go through it, you know, there are all sorts of different engagement techniques, I think we anticipate to employ, as Manager Ls says, to, to engage the full spectrum of our community in this process.
Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Logan?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a, well, let me ask a question first. Elizabeth, I know that it really ultimately is going to fall on the shoulders of the town manager and the president, at least in the first instance, as I understood you, for creation of the steering committee, but I'm, I'm, do you have a sense as to how many people you're, you're thinking of as part of the steering committee?
So, you know, I'd be remiss to put a number on it. I think it's important we have a manageable group size. You know, we really want people to be actively engaged in this process and to have their, their voices be actively heard. And if that group gets too big, then, you know, then, then I think we risk voices getting lost in, you know, in that core group. You know, I, I looked at prior local comprehensive plans that we did, the last time we did our local comprehensive plan, we used our seven-member planning board as our steering committee. The one that we did prior to that had a much larger group and, and then had an executive committee. So, so, you know, I think, I think again, it's, it's important to sort of look at the, you know, look at the backgrounds we want to bring to this and, and ultimately, you know, continue that review process to make sure that the group is representative and, and you know, a, a good practice in putting groups together like this is sometimes to put the group together and then have them evaluate what voices are missing from the conversations. So I think there's always the opportunity to do that as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I guess at the end of the day, the devil is in the details. One, I, on the one hand, you do need all of the relevant stakeholders at the table, but you're right, you don't want it to be so large that it becomes unwieldy. One observation I will make, and, and it's what I hear from, from constituents, is that they feel like the same people make the decisions and that their voices are not being heard. So I do think there has to be some consideration, significant consideration to having those members of the public, if we're really involved in civic engagement, that they have a seat at the table. Now, who that is and how many of them there are, I don't know, but otherwise, we're going to face criticism that it's the same people making the same decisions, and their, and citizens are going to be frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Logan. Any other counsel questions, comments? Counsel Raprasetti, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I remember I participated in the 2010 Local Comprehensive Plan when I served on the Historical Commission, and that, that commission helped to define some of the, you know, the details in the cultural and heritage portion, and historical portion of the Local Comprehensive Plan. I think with regard to citizen engagement, I think it would be good to maybe pull from each one of our villages, you know, the civic association, have a representative from each civic association participate perhaps in the steering committee, and then look to, you know, the other committees, standing committees of the, of the town to, you know, hone in on details, but at least the seven villages would be represented, you know, in part on the development of, of the new plan. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Counsel Raprasetti. Counsel Clark?
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Thank you for this opportunity, and I am looking forward to a new version or an update on the Local Comprehensive Plan. As we have, I would say, dialed up our sensitivity to civic engagement, perhaps there could be periodic opportunities for surveys or citizen comments and on the website, you've done a good job of collecting some of that for SDRs and ADUs. And I recall early times where a similarly styled plan was done and a survey, a citizen survey was sent out after the plan was virtually done, and I thought it was insincere. So I'm wondering if we can get citizen engagement earlier in the process that helps fold in the, the vision before the, the job is done. Thank you.
I'll just say that that, that is the intent of all of our public engagement. We're not looking to, and I, and I don't mean this with any disrespect, we're not looking to check a box to say we brought our public into the process. We serve our public, and we want to hear from them, and we'll do everything we can to engage them in every process. And we'll create a committee taking, you know, again, manager, proposed, Town Council ratified, we'll, 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 together with our councils, select this group, the steering committee, and I do expect, as I described, there to be many subordinate groups working with us on this, if we're successful in what we're attempting to do.
Thank you very much. I think that's healthy, and I see that it's become better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Appreciate your observation. Any other counsel question or comment for Director Jenkins? Not seeing any? Thank you. We will see you later in the evening. I appreciate your time and appreciate the counsel discussion, and going back to you, Town Manager Ls, for the next part of our presentation.
That's right. My final, my final item this evening. David Anthony, Director of Property and Risk Management, will provide us with an update on Barnstable's effort to apply for Green Community Certification. At your next Town Council meeting, there's a workshop planned to discuss the approach recommended by the building commissioner and supported by the town manager to develop and receive approval for a modified stretch code. We plan to have panel members of the building trade and from the state to discuss the building commissioner's proposed approach to this matter. So at this time, I'll ask David to come up and talk about Green Community Certification.
Thank you, Town Manager Ls, and good evening to the Town Council President and to the other town counselors. Sarah, if I could ask you to put up my presentation? Given the late hour, I will try to make this relatively brief, and we will move through this at a pretty good clip. For the purposes of, we start back 2008, which was the Green Community Act, which essentially was set up to inspire towns to take on this idea of energy savings and renewable energy, both to help the bottom line, but also to improve cooperation between the town and between the state entities that were there. What it also did was establish money that was available, seed money, that many towns felt that they needed in order to put in renewables and to do some of the community projects. You established your rights to get some of that money by becoming a green community through the state certification. Next slide, please. So in 2010, our green team, which was made up mostly of town employees, began to meet the requirements of five criterion to, to make our application for Green Community designation. A green vehicle plan and an energy reduction plan and a baseline were established. They were proposed to become part of the town manager regulations at that time, but they were not formally adopted, partly because the issues involving the stretch code at that point. Uh, but they were not formally adopted, partly because the issues involving the stretch code at that point in time were rejected due to community concerns and also concerns shared by then building commissioners. Next slide, please. Since 2010, the town, um, has not been designated as a green community, but we have lived that ideal by being a green community by installing all sorts of renewables on large scale in cooperation with the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op. And we have taken advantage of millions of dollars through the Cape Light Compact to make our buildings and vehicles more energy efficient. Commencing in 2019, and our Infrastructure and Energy Committee, we started to push again for that designation to the point where we applied for and received a grant through the Cape Light Compact in the state to get some professional assistance. And Margaret Song from the Cape Light Compact was appeared before the town council with us back in September when we last updated you. Uh, she was excellent and continues to be an advocate and on our side moving through the process. Next slide, please. So in specific regards to the criterion that we're dealing with, right? Number one is as of right citing for renewables, which has been in place since 2010. Uh, the expedited permitting element has been in place since 2010. Both of those in order to formulate our application, if we were going to move to that full application to the state, simply need to have current legal certification on letterhead saying that they both exist and both meet the criteria. A relatively easy lift, um, and something where we have sample letters from other communities so that we know exactly what the wording needs to be. Uh, these two are essentially done and simply need updated lettering. Next slide, please. Criterion three has been the heavy lift. Uh, this has been, uh, development of an energy reduction plan which starts as an energy baseline against which the goal is to come up with a plan to reduce your energy consumption by 20% over five years. Ironically, if we had used 2008 as our baseline, we would have been close to 30% of energy reduction from that baseline. Uh, simply because of the things that we have done since then. Um, unfortunately, now our baseline is going to be, um, incorporating all of those energy efficiencies. And it is going to be a challenge to reach 20%. But the effort is still the same. We had to audit 65 buildings, which is just wrapping up now. It has been a six-month effort, complicated somewhat by COVID, but basically because our buildings are so large, so complicated and so numerous and spread out over a very large town. It has been a rather heavy effort to get through all of those buildings. Uh, the energy reduction plan framework has already been established based on what we know would be a successful and passable energy reduction plan, which would need to be approved by the state. But that energy reduction plan also requires adoption by both the school committee and the town council. And official letters would need to be included, saying that we have one in place. So at some point in the future, if we decide to move forward with full application, which seems to be the indication, um, we would be presenting an energy reduction plan to this body, the town council. Next slide, please. Criterion four is a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. It's generally called the green vehicle policy. However, it doesn't require electric vehicles, even though we do have some in our fleet. We have over 325 municipal plates of all types. Now, that does include trailers and and some equipment, but we have a rather large fleet. But a plan that would go into effect is going to only affect a narrow band of vehicles because all of your emergency response vehicles and all of your heavyweight vehicles are exempted from the plan. We have about 45 vehicles that then need to meet certain miles per gallon, uh, categories. And, uh, this plan would also need to be presented to the school committee and to the town council. So that plan would also come forward for your approval at some point in the future. Which brings us to criterion five. Next slide, please. Uh, as has been set up by the town manager, at the March 18th Town Council Meeting, a workshop is tentatively scheduled so that the building commissioner can talk about his efforts to meet the the requirements of criterion five. I've received confirmation from the state that Lisa Sullivan, from the Southeast District of the Green Communities, uh, Division, will be attending with her. Uh, she's making available certain code experts that would be able to help inform and and answer questions about specifically about the codes. And we're looking at having a third person on the panel, a developer, who has experienced the codes from the other side, has had to put them into place, who has had to deal with energy requirements, changing codes, interpretation, local interpretation, and state regulations. That panel is meant to help town counselors and 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 also help inform town employees uh, as to what we're looking for at that workshop as an outcome of considering Brian Florence's plan to meet criterion five. Uh, next, next slide, please. It's important to note that in 2021, we have a very different environment for applying than since last year. Previous years, there had been a single date in the year in which you needed to have your packet in. There was one date for application. They are going to be moving towards a rolling admission as there are fewer communities left who are applying for green community designation. So there's going to be a window that opens up from July 1st through December 30th, and applications will be accepted when they are ready. However, official guidance has not come out yet as to any minor changes that will be, uh, in place. So we are moving forward, uh, with the other four criterion to try to make sure that we're ready to go when the time comes. Uh, that's the extent of this update this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Um, great presentation. I really appreciate, um, you being with us this evening. I, you know, requested that the workshop take place on the March 18th meeting. Um, and talking with, um, leadership, uh, Town Manager's office. Obviously yourself, I appreciate, again, that update to know where we are and what we are doing moving forward. And that being said, um, any other counselor questions, comments? Listen, anybody there? Town Manager Ls, did you want to follow up with anything?
Uh, no, I don't think so at this point. The the intent of the workshop certainly is to be able to understand how we're proceeding on this. Um, the ultimate decision relevant to the stretch code. Um, and Attorney Nobus here, if you want to ask more detail, would be, um, an ordinance passed by the town council. So this is the town council's decision. Um, I've recommend, I've supported the building commissioner's, um, recommendation, uh, because I believe it it's appropriate, uh, both given what he's proposing and the past history. Having this brought before town council in the past and failing and then informally discussed with town council and not proceeding. So, um, I do think there's merit in being certified as a green community. And we hope that our approach that we'll share with you, uh, will get us there. And if not, we'll continue, uh, to look at options and hopefully proceed to that certification. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and, uh, communications and everybody involved on this point. So, uh, that all being said, um, Counselor Vice President Schnepp, if you could, uh, get this.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting held on February 18, 2021.
You know, first and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Just double checking. Excellent. Uh, Madam Clerk, throw the roll call vote, please.
Counselors. Ettlis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Daguan.
Yes.
Raprussetti.
Yes.
Heber.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Johnnasy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Thirteenia.
Excellent. At this time, I, uh, would, uh, like to bring forth, uh, counselor communications for boards, committees, missions. The announcer. Counselor Heber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and counselors, uh, I asked, and I I know that our administrator, uh, Cindy Lovell, sent out to all of you, um, a report of the activities of the Cape Cod Regional, uh, Technical High School. Uh, and I'm, uh, proud and, um, really honored to serve as a representative along with Mr. Len Gobiel, uh, representing the town of Barnstable's interests at, uh, one of, as one of the 12 towns that make up the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. And as you know, it's a brand new building. Uh, I was fortunate, uh, to be able to, uh, go through the building. It's a beautiful facility, uh, well-designed, well-put-together. And, uh, I I ask you to please take some time to review the report. It is, uh, very inclusive. Uh, it talks very specifically about how our students are doing at school, uh, their levels of achievement, the courses that they're doing. Uh, it's a very, very, very complete, uh, uh, report. I do hope they take time to look at it. And, um, I do hope that, um, when the COVID is over, that many of you will have an opportunity to come and visit the school. Uh, it is something that we should be very, very proud of. And, uh, as we're seeing, the high cost of going off to college is not for everybody. Uh, the tech school prepares our young people for many, many, uh, trades and things that we need, uh, for our, for our world. And, um, so it's a grand activity and we are proud to be part of. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Heber. Any other counsel communications? Counselor Neary, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to get some information out on, uh, on February 9th, we had our first meeting of the zoning and permitting regulate, uh, Regulations Advisory Committee. Director Jenkins was kind enough to cover some topics, including, um, kind of bringing us up to date on, uh, the Route 132 zoning that that had been visited a few years back, uh, an update on inclusionary zoning. Uh, I find it terrific. I'm going to be educated on all the facets of zoning in the town of Barnstable. And our next meeting will be on March 9th, 2021, uh, where, again, I think we'll we'll be diving into hopefully at least some instruction as to uh, how zoning was created, what it, what it, uh, what it 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 intends to serve, uh, the protections for the residents of the town. And, uh, maybe hindrances that that we can kind of quantify. And with with that also said, it would be great to kind of dovetail that with the new comprehensive plan. Uh, so going forward, we'll have a plan going, going down the road in the future. Try to, try to streamline what we do as a town. Look forward to that. That's, uh, 5:30, um, this coming Tuesday, March 9th.
Thank you, Counselor Neary, and thank you for taking on the task of chairing that committee. Appreciate your time. Uh, Counselor Steinhefer, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as a quick update, the Asset Management Advisory Committee, uh, met back on February 17th. Uh, we discussed, um, a package of properties, uh, that will, at some point in the coming months, come before the council, um, prepare them to go out to bid. Uh, we also talked about a couple of parcels that, uh, staff will be working with the Housing, um, uh, Trust Committee, a couple of town-owned parcels that may be suitable for affordable housing development. Uh, we had an update on the Kettwood Elementary School and the interest expressed from the Kettwood Fire District, uh, possibly working out in a range of where they would take that property over, at least in part, and use it for their, uh, uh, business purposes. Um, and we did get a quick update on the Martins Mills Elementary School, uh, which the committee did recommend that, um, you know, we move forward in the capital process to have that building, um, uh, demolished. Uh, it is a safety hazard and it does cost us money to, you know, maintain it. It's minimal, but it does cost us money each year. Um, and that, uh, particular, uh, project did make it through the first cut of capital planning and we'll see how that unfolds. But that was our basic agenda for that meeting. We're meeting again on March 24th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Steinhefer. At this time, I just wonder, um, now that we had reports from, uh, both the zoning regulatory and the asset management, again, these committees are advisory. Um, as the council president and I've been working with Vice President Schnepp, um, we, it's important that we make these committees, uh, specifically task-oriented. And, uh, what what makes it on their agenda, we are aware of. Uh, there's no surprises necessarily. And the reason why, um, I'd like to see and I encourage more updates like this is that the public is engaged and the public is known. Um, and moving forward, the website's updated and the things and we're working on those things. Um, and to be quite honest with you, um, I did not, and we did not inherit a perfect process because there isn't one necessarily. Uh, but we are working on making it better, constantly moving forward, again, not casting blame on past. Um, but again, improving as we move forward. So I just, um, I thank you, um, for, again, listening, your understanding. And again, these are advisory. Anything that comes out of this committee still needs to be under review, um, by the town council, if not ent- other entities such as zoning regulatory that has to go through the planning board. So this is no way shape or form of, you know, moving or, you know, going around a certain process. These committees are there to enhance the process. So I think I just want to make sure that that's communicated and that's clear. And, um, um, so if if, you know, if if anybody has any questions, again, get my my contact information, the website, talk to these chairs, attend these meetings, the public meetings. And, um, again, those things are there. Take a deeper dive into certain issues and, um, that are that we're going through. Zoning and regulatory and education, as Counselor Neary mentioned, and asset management. You know, managing the properties that we have to make sure we're utilizing those in the best interests of the town. So thank you for, um, that. Uh, Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, I just wanted, um, to congratulate Patty Machado and the youth commission on another successful seventh grade youth summit this year, although different than than prior years. It was actually the year that my son could benefit from it and did. Um, and I was concerned about the medium, honestly, because it was, you know, those of you who've come to the, the, um, youth summit before, it's a really engaging, um, really exciting place to be where the kids can really figure out what might interest them and and just how to protect themselves and and just kind of the whole, um, culture that we have in Barnstable about caring for our kids once they go to the big school. And, um, I was at work, but my son called me and said, you know, this guy is really inspirational, which was really cool to hear from a 13-year-old who's not into anything but Doritos. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you again. Cliff Crosby was the, um, the guest motivational speaker who, uh, was an NFL. Was it NFL? I don't know. Professional football player. I don't know which which league. Um, but apparently made a big mark on Dante and his friends, and they've been talking about it since. So, um, although the change in medium is still, it still was a really valuable experience for them. So thank you for persevering and we look back to getting to, uh, look forward to getting to, uh, the Cape Cod Community College again next.
Thank you, Counselor Cullen. Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Uh, through my liaison, um, attendance to the, um, I think it's Main Street Waterfront Historic District, how we found out that there is a grant opportunity from the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the American Express. And it's aimed at supporting local restaurants that have been around for at least 25 years and are in historic buildings or historic neighborhoods. But perhaps you know a restaurant in your community that would qualify. The grant would provide $40,000, 25% of the grant can be used for general operating costs. And the remaining 75% must be used to upgrade, preserve the building and its area. Uh, and more information can be, uh, found on the, um, National Historic Preservation, National Trust for Historic Preservation. So, um, there are some local restaurants in, uh, that have, uh, old buildings and they could use a shot in the arm in this pandemic time. So I, uh, nominated the Dolphin Restaurant in Michael Village. I nominated the Dolphin Restaurant in Laclelil. And now, in addition to my position as liaison with the selfish committee, I should say that the new selfish licenses are now required as of March 1st. And oyster season will end on March 31st. So heads up for those who are interested in selfishness. Finally, I applaud all those who work hard, get the two vaccinations when they set up at Cape Cod Community College. Very proud that we can offer that to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Any other council communications? As I, I've always stated, the last couple of meetings, the Mass Military Support Foundation Food Box Program at the Transportation Center is still live and well, even amidst the construction. You would have to take the detour if, if you're coming to the Transportation Center through Yarmouth Road down to Main Street, bearing a right on Main Street, but coming up to the Transportation Center, either through the Transportation Center itself or Ridgewood Avenue. So it's still working, but just be patient as it might take you a little longer to get in and out. So, but if you're looking to register, you can go to Mass Military Support Foundation website, mass, M-M-S-F-I.org. Thank you. So, and also wanted to, I attended the school committee meeting last night as a liaison to the school committee. They are still in the midst of the budget process. I would encourage anybody, especially the counselors, if you can review the last two meetings in regards to that, it's very detailed and it talks about vision that they, in our joint, they have a subcommittee that's discussing that and it will come to the full committee to determine and move forward on. So again, lots of discussions and lots of, again, the budget activity that we'll, we'll be reviewing during our budget season. So don't see any other hands up at this point. And with that, I would say that we need to take a five-minute break and we will come back with Nate Mayo from Vineyard Wind for an update. So five minutes, please. Take, take the time, but please return. I have 9:16. Please return by 9:21. Thank you. Okay. If anybody who is muted or the video off, you just bring your video on, that would be helpful. If not, we do have forums and we can move forward. I just wanted to welcome Nate Mayo and Jack Aruda, the Vineyard Wind, and they're here to give us an update. Without further ado, I turn it over to you, to Mayo.
Thank you, President Levesque. Good to see you all. I'm also joined here by Rachel Pactor, our Chief Development Officer, and Chris Rods from our Technical Design and Permitting Manager. So some of the technical team and then, and Rachel who runs the development team. All may be familiar with some of these spaces.
Yes.
I will be brief with you guys. We do have one slide that I wanted to pull up. We can bring that up at the moment. I'm not going to go through the long form, which we presented to you folks for numerous meetings. This is our, our, our map of the on, on, on land construction proposals. Vineyard Wind 1, which we've been talking about for a number of years now, is the blue line to the, to the east, and we're anticipating construction in the fall. And we've also just been discussing it at least one previous meeting and with some of the counselors and in our community meetings, Vineyard Wind Connector 2, the yellow line, slated for construction sometime in 2023. And we're, we're at the beginning stages of permitting that, which will go through a similar process. And we're in host community act, excuse me, host community agreement, discussions with staff on both sides, and those are going well. I, I will let folks know that this is on our website, this map here, vineyardwind.com/barnstable. And we can get into, you know, more details here or, or offline or at one of our community events for folks on the council or, or, or residents listening in if they want more information. We can take that down, I suppose, and I can just go, go very briefly through an update of where Vineyard Wind is at right now. At the federal level, we've, we've gotten some good, very good signals from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, the primary federal permitting agency. They have, have resumed review and have given word that they intend to issue the final environmental impact statement, which is the, the sort of comprehensive report to, which will lead to the final federal permits for Vineyard Wind 1, we hope this spring. And that, you know, at long last shores up the timelines that we've been looking at and those have obviously significant implications for this sewer collaboration that the, the technical staff at the town and at, with Vineyard Wind have been working on for quite some time. So, you know, that, that's the, the sort of high level of what we've got here. We are complete on, on state and local permitting for Vineyard Wind 1 and are really at the initial phases for Vineyard Wind Connector 2. And, you know, just a quick reminder, the HCA, which, which many of these member, the members here followed and, and ultimately supported and obviously town staff had a, had a huge hand for, for, you know, over a year to craft. We're seeking some updates to that and in conversation with them on that. And they'll be bringing some of those items before you. I know Town Manager Mark Elson's brought those, those general updates that those conversations are ongoing. The revenue implications though are there, are there in addition to property taxes. We're discussing, you know, there's a $16 million supplemental payment for each phase of those projects. So Phase 1 and Phase 2, $16 million each. The sewer collaboration, we've come to understand will result in significant town savings. There's full roadway repaving, a broad roster of, of protections at the municipal level, seasonal restrictions and other environmental considerations. And the, the only thing I, I'd like to, you know, sort of remind folks here is our community and stakeholder engagement, which, which has and remains the sort of cornerstone of our, of our development effort to communicate with communities, with environmental interests, with ocean users and that has continued apace in the era of COVID. We've all had to make do with this, but it's, we're, it's worked okay on our end as we've used these digital tools. We have, we have maintained regular community-related events while we host and participate in a broad range of community events, including appearances at your civic associations, neighborhood associations and the like. We also host our, our own events very Barnstable-specific to discuss the ins and outs of what, what is anticipated for the town of Barnstable. Our next one is, I believe, on the 9th at noon, and you can find that information on, on vineyardwind.com website, as can residents. That's easy to sign up. It's a Zoom meeting. We go through a run-through and, and take questions, give you the latest updates. We have several of those though planned throughout the spring and we are, we reiterate our openness. A number of counselors have pointed us in the direction of community groups that we've then reached out to and been able to give briefs to and have a Q and A. I will kind of leave you with, with the fact that we're shifting to potentially, I mean, very likely we're going to be, we're going to be starting construction in the fall. We hope to continue this level of outreach in, you know, in the fall as we approach construction. There's actual movement going on. People's roadways are going to get opened up. There will be machines out there, so we want to make sure there's no surprises as best we can by keeping the neighborhood informed and keeping a regular liaison with you and also. So with that, I can take your questions and of course we'll, you know, welcome any further discussions if you want to get into the weeds here or, or elsewhere.
Thank you for that presentation, for that update. Any other council questions, Connor? Not seeing any? Always appreciate your outreach, Nate and team and the, the way you go about it and try to leave no stone unturned. I know as a council, I appreciate it, always informed, always reaching out. And, and again, because of that, actually we're just well-informed about what you're doing and the benefits to us too. So I appreciate you being with us. Thank you for the entire team for taking the time to be with us. And again, it's much appreciated. So I don't see any other, just making sure. Yeah, so again, thanks for your time and you have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you all for your attention and your commitment to this. And we're here for you for, for any questions. Our team's available.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thanks, Nate.
Excellent. So that concludes that, that presentation. And now we can move on to the orders of the day. I would ask the council to indulge me. I'm going to take an item out of order. I'm actually going to take the item of new business and move it in front of the old business because of the librarian, Kelly, being with us and I didn't want to keep her for the entire meeting. And I know. And I know Maddie Seer as well, and Director Noonan, I should say. So without further ado, I would ask Councilor Clark, if you could read into the record, item number 2021-131.
Well, President Levesque, and thank you for your consideration to take this item out of order. So this is new business, may be acted upon by a roll call majority. Agenda item 2021-131, acceptance of an Institute of Museum and Library Services Cares Act grant in the amount of $3,430 from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners by and through the town to the Weldon Memorial Library.
Second.
Very good. We got a first and a second, and Director Noonan for the rationale, please.
Good evening, President Levesque. I think actually, Kelly, are you prepared to give the rationale?
I, I'm happy for you to give it, Madeline.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right.
But I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have.
So this is an acceptance of a grant for $3,430 from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to the Weldon Library, and this will allow for programming in partnership with the Long pasture Wildlife Sanctuary of the Massachusetts Audubon Society. The Weldon Library did some surveying among their library participants, and nature and science were very popular. And so they are working in partnership to create a citizen scientist program. So this will allow citizens to become educated and support the research efforts of scientists. And they're very excited to be able to use this funding, which is, again, it's interesting because the award was made by the State of Massachusetts to the Weldon Library, but it has to come through the town of Barnstable. So that's, we're here before you to have it accepted. But essentially, this will be a pass-through. Once you vote to accept the funding, it will be passed over from the town to the Weldon Library, so it can be used for its intended purpose. If you want to add anything up?
It is part of the Federal Cares Act, so this, and it came through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. It was a competitive grant, and we were one of 20 other libraries in the state to receive the funds. So the trustees and I are very excited that our proposal was accepted, and it's, it's a very nice award for the patrons and citizens in West Barnstable.
Excellent. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for being with us, too.
Thank you for having me.
My pleasure. And any councilor questions in regard to that? Councilor Shaughnessy, then Councilor Clark.
I just wanted to say what a wonderful collaboration with Long pasture Wildlife Sanctuary and the Massachusetts Audubon Society. I think this sounds like it's going to be a wonderful program, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. We're very excited about it. Because of this, we're also able to add a community calendar to West Barnstable so that all of the, and have it reside in the West, in Weldon Library's website, so that hopefully anybody from the town who's interested in these programs will be able to register and attend.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you, Kelly, for your lovely presentation. We're very proud that you won this competitive event, I mean, competitive grant opportunity. I do want to stress, though, that I have attended several of the talks at the Weldon Library, and a lot of them are science-based and are extremely popular, but that the outreach is not just for the West Barnstable community, but that Weldon serves a broader community than just the West Barnstable Village. I wanted to make sure that, to mention that it is, it has a clientele that is far, far reaching beyond our borders. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Any other councilor communication, question? Not seeing any? I would move to a vote, please.
Councilors. Bogan?
Sorry. Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapkursedi?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Neff?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atslas?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Thank you again, Kelly. Really appreciate you being with us, and congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Take care. Have a great evening.
You, too. Bye-bye.
Moving on to old business now, Councilor Paul Neary, if you could read into the record, item number 2021-076, and open the public hearing, please.
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. President. This is item number 2021-076. It's a public hearing and can be voted on with a roll call majority vote. The supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $37,000 for the purpose of funding seasonal salaries and wages for the fiscal year 2021 Gulf Enterprise Fund operations, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and back to Director Noonan for rationale, please. And also here is Bruce McIntyre. Welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, President Levesque, members of town council. Bruce and I are very happy to be here with you tonight to request a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $37,000. This is to help fund our seasonal salaries and wages for the Gulf Enterprise Fund operations. And if approved, these funds will be provided from the Gulf Enterprise Fund reserves. So it's no secret or surprise to any of you that golf, you know, bursted in popularity during COVID. It really, I think, could be defined as the ultimate social distancing sport. It's provided a lot of healthy outlets for our community, you know, both, you know, our physical health, our social connections, and, you know, just our general mental well-being to be able to golf. And I really think it's been a huge success for the town over the past year, and I want to thank Bruce and all of our exceptional golf team for making that such a quality experience for our members and pass holders at Old Barnstable and Hyannis. So all of this comes with an added cost due to all of the safety protocols that we've been required to adhere to. That has resulted in us, at this point, using up 76% of our seasonal wages line item at Old Barnstable and 81% of Hyannis. So to get us through the end of this fiscal year as we approach the really busy spring season, we're asking for this appropriation, just to make sure that we have sufficient funding to staff both courses appropriately. And Bruce did a great analysis that really breaks down. You can look and see, sort of by the numbers, what that has meant for us, you know, in terms of cleaning and disinfecting golf carts, you know, all of the balls and buckets, you know, not to mention all of the spaces, having staff that are available to kind of help monitor and, you know, kind of provide security to make sure that, you know, everybody's keeping a safe distance. So that is, you know, where we're at, that we want to make sure as we go into this busy season, and we're anticipating, again, another extraordinarily busy year. A lot of new people that came into the game last year, we want to encourage them to keep participating. This is a really positive growth opportunity for golf, and, you know, we hope that you will support this request. And Bruce is available as well to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Noonan. Any questions for Director Noonan or Bruce for that matter? Any questions? Seeing any? I'd like to open the public hearing, and is there any public, anybody from the public waiting, Sarah?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And not having that, I would close the public hearing, and still not seeing any comment, I would move to a vote, please.
Oh. Do you want to say something, Councilor Clark? I mean, Councilor Star?
And I thought Mr. Hebert might have had his hand up, but...
He did.
I did. Thank you. But I thought we're going to take a vote, but I just wanted to thank Mr. McIntyre for taking with us all night to get to this point, and fine job, and I know it was a difficult one because of the COVID. So thanks for your good work out there. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Star.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Did not see the hand there. Feel free to speak up and grab my attention, Nicole.
No problem. I know, I know the work that you're doing.
I bet you do.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clark, vote, please.
Councilors. Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapkursedi?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Neff?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atslas?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us, and sticking it out for the duration. I really appreciate you being here.
Not as late as the last time we were here.
That's right.
It was after the midnight hour. This is early.
Midnight, to be honest with you.
The night is still young.
Feel free to hang out.
All right, moving on to the next item of business. Councilor Star, could read into the record and open the public hearing for item number 2021-078.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. This is supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $5,000 for the fiscal year 2021 Airport Operating Budget for the purpose of funding the administrative costs associated with the airport master plan update planning project. This is a public hearing with a roll call majority vote. And here's the, here comes the rationale.
Here comes the rationale.
I'll start it now.
Lady Service.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Just wanted to go really quickly over the rationale for this. Basically, some background on the project. The airport is requesting an increase in our operating expense budget to cover the cost of administration for masks. So I've listed appropriations. We have one in 2017 and one in 2018 for $1 million for our preparation. However, the cost of the project and the grant received from the Federal Aviation is over $1 million. $5,000 administration fee was never added to the original appropriation. That $5,000 is typically used for administration fees, such as legal ads that we put into paper for national can. Press release type costs are necessary as we bring ourselves. So the table that you see there is the administrative expense that was included in the grant, airport planning fee, and then the total. What, so the request here is $5,000. 95% of that administrative cost paid by the FAA and Mass dot Aaronoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Director Service? Seeing any? Like to open up the public hearing. Sarah, do we have anybody waiting to speak on this item?
There's no public at this time.
Okay. Very good. Not seeing any comment. I would move to a vote, please. Madam Clark.
Excuse me. Councilors. Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapkursedi?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Neff?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atslas?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And just moving on to the next item, the, Councilor Shaughnessy, if you could please read into the record and open the public hearing for item number 2021-078.
Certainly, President Levesque. This is old business, public hearing, roll call majority, full council. This is item number 2021-078, supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $470,000 for the fiscal year 2021 budget, airport enterprise fund operating budget for the purpose of purchasing aviation jet fuel for resale, as written.
A first and a second. Lady for the rationale, please.
Great, thank you. To give you a little bit of background, the airport is requesting an increase in 2021 operating expense budget to cover the cost of jet fuel. The request is, the reason for the request, due to recent increased jet sales. So just to give you a little bit of information about why we're seeing this increase. During the onset of COVID-19, across the nation, we've seen corporate jet traffic. Because of that, we are seeing at our airports, about fuel for those corporate aircraft using our facility in person. For the fiscal year 2021 budget allocated about 900,000 gallons that we need purchased in that year. But as of the end of February, we had already sold nearly 1,000 gallons of it. To date, the airport has sold 18% more fuel per gallon versus year 2020. You can see the numbers there, about 1,000 gallons. First, here we are, right. From February to June, the airport has historically, clear between 25 and 7 fuel loads. And that's the average that we purchase in a month. Typically, the months of February, March, April, those are our quieter months, and we start increase in May and June. In this past January, we actually sold 120% more in January versus 2020 than we have in the past. So due to the increases, the airport has noticed that this trend will most likely continue. We anticipate the need of about 38 loads of fuel announced through June versus 27 or 25. The cost is about $25,000 per load. We do have funds available in our budget right now, about 500,000. So we're seeing a need of at least 428,000 appropriation requests for 470,000, and it includes about a 10% increase as a bonus. Any funds remaining at the end of the fiscal year will be returned to the airport enterprise funds, and the sale of jet fuel will replenish, of course, on the, that's all I have to say.
Excellent. Councilor Atslas, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Just curious, what's your markup on the fuel?
So we have $2 in 10 cent markup. We just increased it to $2.25. So on average, about right today, it was $4.40 average gallon of fuel. And we do have discount food programs for some of our high volume.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Councilor Star.
My question was, are there more corporate flights coming down? Are people who own houses down here flying their corporate jets down? Is that, I mean, is that what it is?
That's what we're seeing. We're seeing that a vast majority, as soon as COVID happened, many homeowners that lived in New York and New Jersey started to transition to KOD with second homes. They work from their Cape Cod home. It was more convenient for them. And so we saw a huge uptick, and we didn't see a lot of corporate jets staying overnight. We would see them come in at the beginning of the week and come back during the And we didn't see a lot of corporate jets staying overnight. We would see them come in at the beginning of the week and come back during the weekend, which is kind of different. We usually see more of a weekend impact. So it was definitely folks that were coming in trying to get away from COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Any other questions? Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Levek. Director Service, how does our fuel prices relate to other airports in the area, New Bedford, Nantucket, those places? Are we in the same ballpark? Are we higher, lower, equivalent? Just curious.
We have been notoriously lower than other airports in the area. We just did an analysis of our program probably, I want to say about six months ago. We worked with Mark Gones, seeing, you know, during changes that we make to our program. Obviously, we want to be competitive, but we don't want to be in such a manner that we're really low in our fuel. Due to that analysis, we realized that we were too low. So we've reached just to reach that dollar amount for our, to cover our overheads as well as the typical mark. So we're now more in alignment with other airports. We have to monitor it to see if we need to make fluctuations.
Correct, correct. Yeah, just as a follow-up, I agree. I know the Oakluffs Harbor was selling fuel cheaper on the fuel dock for boats than you could buy fuel at the same station on the street for your automobile. It actually did create an opportunity because I know jet fuel, these tend to be high-end clients, those type of things. But it created an opportunity where folks were bypassing Balmouth Harbor and gassing up in Oakluffs because it was cheaper to get the fuel. Just a point of view.
Yeah, and we just experienced that as well with Nantucket where we were very surprised that they had a lower rate than us. Because typically, they're usually several cents higher, but they were lower this week. So it's always a game that you have to play a little bit, get pulled in by.
Okay, any other counselor questions? Sarah, just want to open up the public hearing. Is anybody waiting to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
And I would close the public hearing and not seeing any other questions. Madam Clerk, for the vote, please.
I'm sorry about that. Counselors. Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kresetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, for being with us this evening. Appreciate it. And yeah, congratulations on the increased sales in the fuel.
Thank you.
Yeah, silver lining, COVID silver lining. Always looking for those. Moving on to the next item of old business, Counselor Rap Kresetti, if you could read into the record, item number 2021-081 and open the public hearing, please.
Yes, this is old business, a public hearing, roll call, majority, full counsel. Item 2021-081 appropriation order in the amount of $70,000 for community data visioning project consultant in support of a local comprehensive plan update as written.
Second. First and a second, and Director Jenkins for the rationale, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. As just noted by Counselor Rap Kresetti, this is a request for a $70,000 for a community data and visioning project consultant in support of our update to our local comprehensive plan. As we've discussed, a local comprehensive plan is a way to interpret the community's visions and the values we seek to protect here in Barnstable. It's a way to anticipate, coordinate, and balance policy decisions related to the growth and development, infrastructure, economy, and resource protection. This request is for consultant services to develop and implement a plan to engage, involve, and collaborate directly with the public to develop a shared vision for our community's future. Supported by town staff and in cooperation with the designated local comprehensive plan committee, as previously discussed, the consultant will first compile, analyze, and showcase relevant demographic, economic, and community land use data that will be used to set the table for objective conversations between the town residents and other stakeholder groups. Additionally, the consultant will provide support for convening the community through a series of outreach methods to assess perspectives on core values and perceived challenges and opportunities. The aim is to use innovative, creative, and diverse public participation strategies to overcome any limitations to physically convening and ensure participation in the process is well-rounded and inclusive and ultimately results in partnership and trust building with our community. I'd be remiss if I didn't just take a moment to recognize and thank some of my talented comprehensive planning staff that have been supportive of these efforts, Gloria McCarson and Kate Maldonado, who've helped to push these efforts forward. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before I actually entertain the questions, I'd actually open the public hearing at this point. Sarah, do we have anybody waiting to comment?
There's no public comment on this at this time.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing and then close the public hearing, and now we can open up for questions. Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Levek. Director Jenkins, is this consultant an in-house consultant, or have you vetted and found a consultant outside town staff?
This would be for outside consulting services. We have not begun that process. Again, I think it's important to put our local comprehensive planning committee in place and to really start this entire effort in a grassroots fashion, including scoping the project and consultant selection.
With a follow-up, so the process will be to kind of create the selective committee, formulate a rough outline of plan, and then seek outside consultants' help to try to drive all that together. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And, you know, not to be sort of soft on what we think the deliverables are going to be, but I do think it's important that although we have a very strong and solidified vision for where we're going, that we leave it open to, again, to make sure that this process is put together in collaboration with our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. Counselor Atslis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Jenkins, so the consultants, what's the vetting process for determining the consultant that you're going to use for this project? That's my first question. I'll ask my second one after that one's answered.
So this, at this value, this would have to go through a procurement process, which again, we would establish minimum qualifications for selection of a consultant, put out an RFP, and then evaluate responses to those proposals as they come in relative to the criteria that's established in that consultant selection.
Okay, my second question is, thank you for that. Given how talented our staff is, is this not something that our own staff could conduct? Or does it have to be done by, have to be handled by an outside consultant?
I think that's a great question, and we obviously evaluated that. I mean, in terms of looking at the scale of public outreach that we want to do, I'll be honest, I don't think we have the in-house manpower to organize multiple events, surveys, workshops, mapping capacity to engage the community at that scale. You know, that is a, that's a tremendous effort if you're really looking at a community of our size and our complexity. Again, to organize, to organize community engagement tools which truly do that outreach, it takes a lot of manpower. And so while we're certainly looking to supplement this as much as possible with other resources. So a good example is we have, we have done in partnership with the K-Cod Commission, some of the sort of initial groundwork for this, some of the mapping, some of the demographic analysis. And we continue to look for opportunities to do some of that. The community engagement process is just one that is going to require a lot of people on the ground to interact with individuals, and I do think we need this.
Thank you.
That was a great question. Thank you, Counselor Atslis. Thank you, Counselor Jenkins, for the response. Any other questions? Counselor Bogan, please, then Counselor Rap Kresetti.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. I know it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg question, but why would you not engage the consultant early to help the town manager and the town council president in constituting the steering committee?
Um, I mean, from my perspective, putting that steering committee is, you know, together, I think, is going to be a process that, you know, that is very specific to our community and knowing the individuals in our community and the different sort of perspectives that we want represented on that committee. So, you know, certainly, we can sort of, you know, I think a consultant might bring, you know, best practices or advice into that. You know, I see that as almost an intimate process that I think the council and the manager are best able to conduct.
Let me just suggest. I disagree because it seems to me by the time the consultant comes in, the cake is half-baked at that point. So it seems to me that if you're looking at best practices, you're better off engaging the consultant early so that they can tell, speak to their experience in other towns and what they believe, who they believe the relevant stakeholders are. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, again, you know, defer to the comments I think that town manager else made and that, you know, the local comprehensive planning committee are certainly, you know, it's one way to engage and, you know, there are threads that will carry through this process. But ultimately, the goal is, you know, to engage, again, broadly and deeply in our community through various forms and groups and techniques. So again, the, you know, the root of this process is not just, you know, not just engagement, not just outreach, but, you know, through collaboration and partnership building with our community in establishing that community vision. But thank you. We will certainly, we will certainly go back and.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. Counselor Rap Kresetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. So 10 years ago, was a consultant used the same way? Do you know?
Yeah, so that, so the process that we used 10 years ago was one that was much different than the one we engaged in today. I believe they didn't hire a traditional consulting firm. I believe additional staff was brought in to supplement. At that time, in terms of sort of looking back on that process, you know, it wasn't necessarily clean. The LCP process last time started around 2005 and didn't conclude until 2010. So, you know, I think there's some lessons learned there, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're looking for the support. So we can, you know, make a plan, implement a plan, evaluate that plan, and make sure that this process stays on track and meets expectations.
So with regard to timeframe, the consultant, what do you envision, how long do you envision this consultant?
So onboarding or the process as a whole, Counselor?
No, requiring the consultant's services. When you put out the RFP, how long do you anticipate the contract?
Yeah, I mean, I see this first step at the process of one taking between nine and 12 months. You know, I think we have an opportunity over the summer to do some really effective outreach, you know, to really, people get out and about during the summer to really meet people where they are. So again, not sort of having all of those engagement techniques defined. You know, I can certainly see spending the summer implementing a number of core engagement strategies. But, you know, I guess overall, in terms of the arc of this process, you know, this sort of first step, you know, being between nine and 12 months, overall plan development for the local comprehensive plan being between 18 months and two years.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Counselor Levek. And thank you, Elizabeth. Gloria, your eloquent introduction and the explanation to justify this expenditure to update our local comprehensive plan. And I embrace these plans, and I don't think we use them enough. But as you know and others, that I had experience with the town's development of the open space and recreation plan that was done with a consultant. And in fact, that was one of the factors in nudging me to run for town council because that document had pages of serious errors, both in formatting and substance, where a key, a reference to a key was a photograph and duplication of numbers. So I'm hoping that when we take on this consultant, we have a high grade of, a high product that we can be proud of in the town of Barnstable. And I don't mean to say that so much as a criticism, but that surely is, we need a professional document if we're going to be dropping that kind of money.
I share the same ambition, Counselor Clark. I mean, we want this to be, you know, a meaningful and effective document. And of course, you know, addressing that from, you know, from all angles is critically important.
Any other counselor questions on the? Okay, I'll have to switch to another screen. This is the only screen I have. So we've already done the public comment, public hearing, so without any further questions.
Counselors. Rap Kresetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I think this is an important piece to moving forward and, you know, just also getting an outside perspective. So I appreciate your support in that. Moving on to the next piece of old business. Vice President Schnep, if you could read into the record, item number 2021-082, and open the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority full counsel. Item number 2021-082 appropriation order in the amount of $92,945 for the treatment of the invasive species Hydrilla in Long Pond, Centreville, and Mystic Lake and Middle Pond, Marston's Mills.
Excellent.
First and second, and rationale, please.
Thank you, Counselor Levek, Elizabeth Jenkins. And now for something completely different. This, again, is appropriation order for the treatment of invasive species in Long Pond, Centreville, Mystic Lake, Middle Pond, Marston's Mills. The town annually manages the growth of the invasive non-native plant Hydrilla in these lakes and ponds with an EPA-approved chemical treatment. There have been significant. There have been significant advancements in the understanding of how this treatment can be dosed and applied to achieve maximum efficacy with minimal impact over the last several years. And some of these advancements have been supported by data collected and the experience gained working on Barnstable ponds. There's evidence to support that Hydrella is ultra-sensitive and susceptible to fluoridone in the very earliest stages of growth. Effective control can be achieved with lower doses of the herbicide with a shorter exposure time if it's applied with a pre-emergent treatment approach. Using this pre-emergent approach not only improves efficacy, but significantly reduces the potential non-target impact to native species. So again, we are looking to begin this chemical treatment this year in May, ahead of the budget schedule, for all the reasons noted, and thus are bringing this request forward at this time. I'd like to recognize and thank Darcy Carley, our conservation administrator, for her fantastic work on this program, as well as Karen Malkus and Amber Unra in DPW. They are our very talented lakes and ponds team and do a great job managing this and other lakes and ponds efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any comments, questions? Without seeing any, I would like to say, not only because of the cost, cost in my neighborhood, is that I, you know, I appreciate, not only as a council, but as a constituent, your ability in recognizing that we need to do it earlier and that we need to just plan earlier, most definitely because of climate change and things, you know, that we needed to be earlier. So I know that will, Indian Lakes Association will be very pleased to know that this is moving forward. They will find comfort in that, that their water issues will be mitigated quickly. So that is always a big concern for the Indian Lake people and that organization. So thank you for that, and thank the staff from us, especially for myself, for the hard work in recognizing and moving forward with that plan. Not seeing any other.
President Levesque, we do have public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you. You're the best. Anybody for public comment?
Ms. Carey, you have three minutes?
I'm sorry, Ms. Carey, that I, I almost skipped you. I apologize, my apologies. So I know you've been with us, so. Tina, go ahead. Tina, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, I live on Long Pond, they've been spraying the pond now for 20 years. Yeah.
I can hear you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes. Tina, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello? Oh, God.
Yeah, Tina, hold your phone.
Yes, I would like you to postpone voting on this because they just passed a new law that was on the K-Cod times about spraying a certain, spraying a certain chemical that's killing all the bees. So I'm, I'm wondering if you.
Was that it, Tina? Tina, can you shut off the, the television? That might help.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. You may want to shut off the television so that you're not, because it's.
I don't have the television on. I've got two machines going. I don't know which one I'm supposed to talk in, but anyway, I was wondering if they can do some research on this, because it's only just spread, and it's also linked to this cyanobacteria that we're now getting, the, the chemicals that are going into the pond. And I'm downwind of that on Long Pond, and we've had three people die of cancer, all my budding neighbors, because we get all the wind from it when they spray it. They use airboats or something when they do it. So it's all airborne. So it does affect the bees. Nothing grows here on the Route 28 side of Long Pond, because it kills all our grass, it's killing the trees. You can't have any perennials, they just die. So it's really having a serious effect after 20 years, and now it has spread into all these other ponds. So whatever we're doing, we need to try something different. This spraying isn't working. There are fish that eat this weed. It's an invasive weed from people putting their aquariums, dumping them into ponds and lakes and stuff. It's some weed that they use to sell in pet stores. It's also brought up by the ducks from Florida, because Hydrella is all over Florida and down south, because they use it in their septic treatment plants, because it, I guess it, it filters out bacteria from septic systems. So I'm at the point now with this Hydrella thing and all this spraying and the devastation that I see that's going on with it, that it's really time to like call Woodstall or some scientists and try something different. I mean, nobody wants the weed, but we have, you know, bittersweet that's everywhere. I don't know if anybody knows that it's like an octopus under the ground, you can't get rid of it. And once you get all that free mulch from the dump, all you're doing is bringing all this bittersweet into your yard. I mean, I go around cutting down bitter street and trying to pull it up. You can't, it, it's just ungodly. But, you know, we're just not getting anywhere with this spraying, and they keep saying, oh, it's a safe spray, but really, there's no such thing as a safe herbicide. It kills something and it lets other things live, you know? It, it, it's bad. Herbicides are bad, and it's airborne and it's killing the bees. So I would suggest that you call the Barnstable Bee Association to find out if this new chemical that was just banned this week is in what they're spraying, the tonic, what they're spraying, if it has this chemical that is no longer allowed in Massachusetts. And also, there are fish that eat this weed, but no one likes to hear it, but grass-eating carp. All you need is two fish for a mile, for a mile worth of space. So I mean, if you put two carp in there and then you caught them at the end of the season, it would be much healthier than spraying pesticides.
Okay.
So I'd like you to postpone the vote if you could.
Okay, we'll take that in consideration, Tina. Thank you for taking the time, and thank you for being with us this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
All right, bye-bye.
Do any counselors want to respond to public comment? Council Axalas?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Carey's comments brought to mind a couple of questions. Director Jenkins, have we used this type of treatment before? And if we have or we haven't, either this treatment or previous treatments, how long do they typically last? And those are my initial two and a half questions.
Those are great questions. We have used this treatment before. We've been running this invasive species program for at least 10 years, and Hydrella is a very persistent and very evasive weed that, that needs constant management. And, and we do treat on an annual basis. We, of course, get our treatment evaluated and permitted to reduce any sort of annual impacts at this point, especially with this pre-emergent treatment. We're at extremely low levels of this aquatic herbicide, less than four parts per billion application. We did a comprehensive assessment of the, of the efficacy of other treatments, potentially without using chemicals. A year or two ago, we've actually switched to mechanical and suction-based harvesting in some of our other ponds, based on the ability to effectively manage. In these ponds, given, again, given the persistence of these weeds and its continued growth, in order, really in order to protect our native species in the pond from being overwhelmed by this weed, weed, as well as the recreational enjoyment in the pond. We have, again, in cooperation with our talented team, continue to recommend this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Axalas. Any other, Sarah, is there any other public comment?
No other public comment at this time.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Council Bogan, please.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I think Elizabeth might have answered my question. So do I understand that, in fact, we have looked at the environmental and health effects of the treatment substance and modified the treatment methodology based upon that assessment?
That's exactly why we're here tonight, Councilor Bogan. You know, we continue to evaluate how we can get good results with as little impact as possible and as little use of herbicides as possible. Again, we feel like moving the treatment up to the pre-emergent approach will allow us to use less, less herbicide with more efficacy. And again, we do feel like it's necessary to use this approach at this time. You know, there's no way at this point either are, you know, putting, some of the other techniques we use are putting down mats or actually diver, diver-assisted suctioning, really the spread and the pace of spread of in Hydrella at these ponds. This is, this continues to be the recommended approach.
Thank you.
And again, this goes to the best practices type of approach that town manager L has put in just a few years ago in regards to using herbicides on our town owned and town-made game properties. So, Council Johnson.
Thank you, President Levesque. Director Jenkins, how is the herbicide applied to the water bodies? Is it sprayed or is it placed in the pond?
So it was actually that my impression that it is actually applied directly into the water body and not sprayed, but I'm sorry, Darcy Carley is not here. She would definitively know the answer to that question. I believe it's actually mixed with the water and not sprayed, but I would have to get back to you on that question.
Any other council questions? Public hearing is closed. Without any other questions, I would move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Hebert.
Certainly listening to Mrs., Mrs. Carey. I, I hope we continue to pay attention to those comments, but I will vote yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Johnson.
I'm going to abstain.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axalas.
Stain.
Bogan.
Stain.
Clark.
Stain.
Hohl.
Yes.
Dagewone.
No.
Rapacecki.
Yes.
Okay, I have seven yes, one no, and four abstain.
Okay, it passes, right?
Yes, it's, it's a roll call of the full majority.
If I may, Mr. President, I think it passes, but I'm not sure the, the numbers add up.
Yeah.
Because I got, I got 12.
Right.
Yeah, it should be 13. I had eight yes. I had eight yes.
Yes, you are correct. I apologize. I, there was eight yes. So there were seven.
No problem. Okay.
It does pass, yep.
Excellent. Great work tonight, everybody. Thank you for indulging on the honoring of Mr. Reed and Mr. Morrison and the update and all the talk, talking about public engagement and the local comprehensive plan. I really appreciate all your time, and I would take a motion to adjourn. End of vote, please.
Don't move.
Second.
First and second, all roll call.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axalas.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hohl.
Yes.
Dagewone.
Yes, and good night.
Rapacecki.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
13 yes.
Excellent. Well, good night, everybody. Appreciate your time. Thank you, Director Jenkins, Mr. Manager Cliver, Karen Ober.
There.
Freddie Colling. Colling.